Got that one. A call to order, the Open Space Board of Trustees meeting for September 10th, 2025. Let's do a roll call, starting at this end to my left.
Sarah Glenn here.
John Carroll, present.
Michelle Estrella here.
Brady Robinson here.
And I'm Harmon Zuckerman, and I'm here. So we have all five of us, we have a quorum. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments on page one of our minutes? Page two? Three? Well, then, we shouldn't have anything to say about that. Okay. I will take a, I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Any second? Oh, that's right, we have two abstentions.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from Estrella, seconded by Robinson. Take a vote.
I abstain.
I abstain, I was not present.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we have two abstentions and three yeses, so the minutes are approved. Next order of business is going to be public comment. So these are, this is your opportunity to make a comment for any item that is not on the agenda and/or identified for a public hearing, sorry. You can, you can make comments on, on the agenda. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so essentially, members of the public are welcome to come up and speak to any item that's on the agenda or any item related to the open space purposes that we're here to discuss tonight. I guess we're gonna have to do public participation rules first, and then we'll call you up.
Perfect, thank you. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and OSPT, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit the link provided. The city will enforce the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revise Code, including participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any city meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the board. Only one person at a time at the podium, unless an accommodation like an interpreter is required. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No standing in or otherwise blocking the aisles in violation of the fire code or in a way that obstructs the vision or audio of other audience members. No signs or flags shall be permitted in council chambers, except for one sign held by a person measuring no more than 11 by 17, which is held no higher than the person's face. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium or dais or walls or other surfaces of the chamber. Signs, flags, or other items used to communicate must be held by one person when displayed. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally or with sounds such as applause or snapping, with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. If you are joining in person and would like to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing, please sign up at the dais here, and we'll call you up to speak at the podium. If you're joining online, you can raise your hand to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing. You can do that using the raise hands icon or by clicking the participants icon, the three dots on the bottom right, and select raise hand. And we do have several people signed up in advance to speak and others who have signed up here in person tonight. So up first is going to be Wendy Sweet, followed by Chelsea McAlman, and then up after that will be Andrew Feeny and Jessica Beacon. So first is Wendy Sweet.
Good evening, board members and OSMP staff. My name is Wendy Sweet, Executive Director of the Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance. At the February OSPT meeting, I shared BMA's appreciation for the 7C Initiative, encouraged you to consider not just how people get to open space, but how they move through it, especially by bike. Since then, we haven't received any updates until this memo. While it outlines some useful strategies for trailheads and transit, it still reflects a bias towards hiking access with no mention of opening additional trails to bikes as part of the multimodal access strategy. One prime example of this missed opportunity is the connection between Shanahan Ridge and Doughty Draw. The data shows that Doughty Draw is one of the trailheads that more people drive to. Today, there is no bike-legal way to make this connection through OSMP. People wishing to ride from Boulder have to ride on Marshall Road and cross Highway 170 to access the Marshall Mesa Trailhead. This is a real, on-the-ground connectivity gap. OSMP already owns most of the land in this corridor, the rest is private, making alternate routing impossible. There is no regional trail system connection between South Boulder neighborhoods and the Doughty Draw unless OSMP provides it. Fixing this doesn't require building a new trail, it just requires thoughtfully opening a short section of an existing trail to bikes, enabling a safe, low-emission, non-motorized route that aligns perfectly with OSMP's climate goals. We believe the 7C Initiative must include this type of low-hanging fruit if it's going to live up to its goals around climate, equity, and multimodal access. And we urge OSMP to treat bike travel as a stent, essential infrastructure, not just something that begins and ends at a bike rack. We appreciate OSMP's collaboration, both in building great trails like North Sky and initiating important efforts like 7C. As this planning work continues, we hope to see more specific actions that reflect how people ride bikes both to and through open space. That includes identifying and opening connections like Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw, where the only missing piece is policy, not property. We don't need to collect more data or wait months or years to act now and create a safer, low-carbon, car-free option to Doughty Draw. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay, up next, we have Chelsea McAlman. Okay, and it does not look like Chelsea's online. We'll ask again maybe at the end. So up next, we have Andrew Feeny, then Jessica Beacon, followed by Michael Walsh.
Hi, thanks for having me here. My name is Andrew Feeny. I've lived in Boulder for more than 25 years, and over that time, I've witnessed and appreciated the improvements that have been made in mountain bike access in our local trails. And the changes have been meaningful, but I think that there's still more work that needs to be done. For the past 10 years, I've had the privilege of coaching the Fairview High School mountain bike team. Our program has grown to over 100 student athletes, and our kids are frequent responsible visitors to both city and county trails. Last year alone, our team did over 500 hours of trail building and maintenance in our community. As a coach and community member, I'm deeply concerned about the safety of these students, as well as the broader Boulder community. Right now, one of the biggest safety challenges is access to the South Boulder Trails. We have to ride down Marshall Road and cross a highway at a very busy and dangerous intersection to access the trails. I know that improvements are being done to this trailhead, but it will not reduce the number of cars in this area. In fact, the new trailhead may increase vehicular traffic. Doughty Draw and the Springbrook Loop are some of the best mountain bike trails close to town, and because there's no safe and direct bike connection from South Boulder, many people are forced to drive there, this increases car traffic and congestion in the very places we are trying to protect. The last time bike access from South Boulder to Doughty Draw was considered was back in 2011. That was more than a decade ago. The issue remains the same today. Our kids and our community need a safe, non-car route to this trailhead. This is not just about recreation, it's about safety and responsible access. I urge the board to take action now. If we want to align with the city's Vision Zero and Climate Goals, we should open an existing trail connection through open space to allow bikes safe passage to Doughty Draw. This could be through South Boulder Creek West in the Greenbrier Connector, or the North Fork of Shanahan to the Lower Big Blue Stem. These trails already exist and could easily be open to bikes. I know some kids that can help with that. We can address the safety issue today. Let's stop waiting and make this a priority for the well-being of our youth and our community. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have Jessica Beacon.
Good evening, thank you for being here this evening. I'm a parent of teenagers who ride their bikes all over Boulder, on and off the trail. And while my kids aren't on the high school mountain bike team, many of their friends are. So as a parent, I would love to see a trail connecting Shanahan Ridge to Doughty Draw that would allow riders, especially those from BJC, the Boulder High, and Fairview Mountain Bike Teams, to be able to safely ride from Boulder to the Doughty Draw Trailhead in order to access the trails at Marshall Mesa without having to ride on Highway 170 or Marshall Road. If you've ever ridden this stretch of road, you know that there is no shoulder and blind corners are present. There should be, and there can be, a safer option to access these South Boulder Trails. As an avid cyclist myself, I ride in that area often. I have a group of friends who live in the Bear Creek Elementary Neighborhood area. I've been riding with them regularly for many years. We meet at one of their homes near the elementary school, and we ride to Marshall Mesa via Marshall Road and have to cross that 170 to get there. Now, we are adults, we are all experienced riders, but let me tell you, every time we have to ride there, it is a less-than-ideal and pleasurable experience. None of us want to have to drive our cars there and park at that trailhead. As Andy mentioned, yes, there'll be more parking spaces, but that's only going to encourage more people to come and park there. Many of us, I live in North Boulder, I often ride from North Boulder to South Boulder Trails to take advantage of those trails. Riding there is a mishmash of streets, bike paths, and sometimes trails. For those of us who want to access this area, there should be safer options, and I think Shanahan Ridge is an excellent example. Being able to access those trails from a neighborhood and ensure the safety of adult and child, children riders should be at the top of the list. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Walsh, followed by Christine Lipson. If there's anybody else in person who'd like to sign up to speak, you can do that up here at the dais. If you are online, you can raise your hand, or if you're on your phone, you can press star nine.
Okay, I'm Mike Walsh. I'm actually a board member of BMA, so I'm appreciative of Wendy and her constant advocacy for expanding trail access to mountain bikers. But I think this issue is not really just about mountain bike access, it's about recognizing that whether it's Fairview, BJC, or Boulder High, after-school, kids that are at school trying to get to the trailhead for practices, it's difficult. There's a lot of constriction around the limited trails that exist near the high schools. Trying to find ways to dissipate the trail impact of cyclists in the afternoon safely is vitally important, in my opinion. And so, my son was on BJC, raced for Boulder High, and the idea that I had to leave work to come driving when he was a freshman and sophomore to the trailhead was utterly impractical, but yet, we found a way to make it happen. So adding trails that allow us to have connectivity from town to those trailheads, north and south, is vitally important. And to me, it seems like the West TSA is an obvious choice to figure out how to not just say this is about cyclists, this is about dissipating a pretty important user group, trying to minimize impact on existing hikers, dog walkers, whatever it is, trailrunners, and trying to figure out how to say connectivity matters and safety from where the kids are at school to where they want to be to recreate after-school safely, not on a screen, is vitally important. So I'm appreciative of Wendy for being a constant advocate and company of these things, and we actually had a number of kids that were eager at, that rode for BJC, that ride for Boulder High, as well as for Fairview, that wanted to come and speak, but they're juggling a lot of things between school, practice, and trying to manage these things in order to come and speak, so here we are advocating on their behalf. So appreciate your time, and this is an important issue. Thank you.
Next, we have Christine Lipson, and then Karen Hallwig has signed up to speak online.
Good evening, my name is Christine Lipson. I live in North Boulder, and I've been in the area for over 30 years. And I also am going to speak about the strategic plan, Item 7.3, to implement the key trail connections. I know this has been on the master plan since 2005, and, you know, that's, that's 20 years. So it's time to do something now. I'm the mom of a competitive cyclist, my son, he was also on Simba, BJC, Boulder High, and now for CU, so I'll add that to the mix of teams. And my husband coaches several of the junior teams here in the area. I also ran the GoFundMe site for Magnus White when he was killed. And that's very close to my heart as far as the danger that we face when we're on the road. I implore you to do something, and do something now, so another kid doesn't have to die. It is mountain bike racing season right now for both the high school kids and for CU. This connection is four miles, but it will make a huge difference. And it's not something hard, it already exists, and it just needs to be opened up. It's an easy way to keep our kids safe, and I don't want to wait till another kid dies. I implore you to do the right thing and open this now. Thank you.
And online, we have Karen Hallwig. Karen, you should be unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Very quietly.
Okay, I'll try to speak up. Can you, is that okay?
Karen, it's, it's pretty quiet. Can you get closer to your mic or speak a lot louder?
I'm speaking directly into my mic.
Okay, we'll do our best to hear you.
Thank you. I just tuned into the meeting this evening, and I don't know all the details behind the discussion that's going on, but I feel it's important to say that we have spent millions of dollars developing bike routes throughout the city, and I live in the vicinity of Fairview High. And I know that it's possible to get from Fairview High by safe bicycle routes to the trailheads in the south part of the city that allow mountain bikes. So I encourage you to use the bike system that we've developed in the city to connect with open space bike trails where it's allowed, rather than building new bike trails through the open space to get there and duplicating that system. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Karen, we could hear that. We got you.
Thanks.
And just one last call, it doesn't look like Chelsea is here, who signed up in advance, and nobody else has signed up in person or online, so I believe that is everybody.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the public comment section of the agenda, and we're gonna go to matters from the board, and so we're gonna, it allows for discussion on written information items, other issues brought up by board members, and I guess we could start, if there's anybody who has any comments on, on the public comment, that is something that we are entitled to make. So if anybody wants to come up with, with any reaction to public comment before we go on. Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
I want to thank the speakers who came here in person to speak on, especially the emotional account of keeping our kids safe, so super appreciative of that. We are gonna have a presentation on this later, and I think maybe that's a better time to respond to the topic in general, and maybe perhaps some of the issues that these folks brought it, brought up, is that right?
Yeah. Unless you want to.
Yeah.
Say something right now, you can just bring it up substantively in here.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you all for speaking up. I, I think that, I understand that the kids couldn't come on their behalf, I know my kids are at home doing homework, and we, we try to ride to Marshall Mesa ourselves, and they're BJC kids as well. But I will save the rest of my comments until the actual topic. We probably won't get to it for another hour. If you all can stay, great, if not, you can watch the video afterward. It'll be posted, I think, probably as early as tomorrow, and we'll have some more conversation about it.
I just want to thank the members of the public who came to speak to us, it's always great to hear your perspective, and a special shout-out to Coach Feeny, because I have a kid who is one of his charges this year as a freshman at Fairview, so thanks for keeping him safe and taking good care of him and getting him inspired about mountain biking, I appreciate that a lot. So now, I think we do have some matters from the board. I know I talked to Brady, Brady, you wanted to talk a little bit about budget.
Yeah, thanks. Dan Lauren, thanks for the, the budget update email. I do have a few questions about that. How much did our, our spend for wildfire go up? What was the delta on that?
For the allocation on the wildland fire positions?
Yeah.
We pay 47% in 2026, which is somewhere around $450,000, which increases to around 927.
I think, I appreciated the narrative, I think one thing just in the future which would be helpful is to have a, because I also went into the, the budget website, and it's, it's not apples-to-apples, so the, the spreadsheets that we were looking at when we approved the budget, I can't see what changed easily. So in the future, that would be helpful, because it, just our process, if we approve a budget and then it gets changed, it'd just be nice to know exactly what happened. So, okay, so that went up roughly $400,000?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And then, in terms of cost allocation, it mentions that, so there, the new, the new cost allocation model went in place in 2024, and there was some general fund money that was gonna kind of ease the transition from what we owed as per the new, for central services, as per the new cost allocation model. But those funds weren't available, so it's increasing more quickly than it had, we had anticipated. But it's still gonna get to the, quote, right amount in 2027?
That's correct, yeah. When the model was brought in-house and the methodology was adjusted, the initial ask in 2024 was to meet the $4.5 million, the new amount right away. We proposed a three-year, multi-year step-up to be able to meet that number in 2027. So the goal and the fund financial is, that's still the case, that we hit that number in the 2027 budget, but based on the modified budgets in '25 and what's being proposed to council for 2026, our share of cost allocation in the current year and next year increased, so about $250,000 in the current year and $375 in 2026, and then there's no change to the 2027 amount that you saw.
Okay, and then, it did make a mention that the projections going forward would be greater than they had been previously, and previously, they had been almost exactly 5% of operations. What is it now?
On percentage, I don't have that off the top of my head, I can send you that. The six-year impact, which includes the 250 and the 375 that I just mentioned, is about $2.5 million in the, in the, over the six years. So on percentage, year-over-year growth, I'd have to, I'll send that to you after, but I don't have that off top of mind.
Okay. But is it a, is it a straight growth curve, or is it?
No, there was, the changes that I just stated for '25 and '26, no change in '27, small increases in '28, '29, and then the, those final two years is where we saw most of those increases.
Okay, so there's a projection for it to go up significantly in 2030 and 2031?
Correct.
And, and do we have a, I understand that's a long ways out, and it's hypothetical potentially, but why is that?
I don't know that I can sufficiently answer that, but we can send that to Charlotte. I, I believe there is a change in the calculation based on some of the internal service items that are on that document, but I can ask Charlotte for, for more of those specifics.
Yeah, that's my understanding, too, there was several, I think, departments that they reviewed the cost allocation model for those, and they changed the modeling for those internal service departments, which then affected all the funds' contributions to cost allocation in the out-years, but yeah, we can get more.
Yeah.
Specifics.
Okay. I've got a few other nitty-gritty questions I could probably handle over email better. I thought it was interesting, Mark Wallach, did you all read his, his email?
Yeah, thanks for sending that, Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle highlighted that for us. And in it, Mark mentioned that the, it isn't a matter of transparency that the, that the budget lacks, which incidentally is what our motion was to counsel that, a call for more transparency. He said it's.
But not in the budget, just as it relates to.
Cost allocation, but I mean, I kind of presumed that he would, I took what he said to maybe being addressing somewhat of what we have brought up, too. And he said, it's not, it's not a lack of transparency, it's a lack of simplicity. And it's interesting, I think those are synonymous sometimes. I can, I can think of, back when I was a professional advocate and used a FOIA request, Freedom of Information Act request, to get information, one of the ways the agencies could stymie us was by giving us everything, and so we'd literally get two boxes of information, and then we had to figure out what the hell we had just gotten.
One sec, Brady.
Yeah.
Can members of the public hear Brady, since he's back from his mic? Can you raise your thumb if you can hear him all right?
Anyway, I'm sorry for the anecdote, but it's just, and then it occurs to me that the, the cost allocation model, which we got, which was great, is 540 pages long and is, is inscrutable, and it isn't 540 pages long to be inscrutable, it's 540 pages long, I believe, to comply with, you know, federal guidelines on how cost allocation works, and it is not intended to be a document for the general public or for even people like us. And so, I don't know if this is the right time to discuss it, but I just think there's a few things we could recommend in the future in terms of department-level breakdowns, like what did, what, how many hours of attorney time did we get for this? Like, like metrics, and, and, you know, what, what are the percentage changes over time? Because the other thing, we had to figure out what the percentage changes were. That wasn't obvious in the documents that we got in our budget, we had to go in and turn a PDF into an Excel spreadsheet and play around with it. And so, there are ways that I believe the city could boil down a few metrics for the boards and commissions and also for the general public to, I, I just think there's some room for improvement there, and I would like to have an opportunity to discuss that with the board more at a future date, and maybe just get your thoughts on that. That's all I have to say for now.
Any thoughts to respond to Brady on the board? Yeah, Sarah, no?
I, I think it's a really great point, and it's nice to have this, this position last for over several years so that we have a chance to understand what's happening with the budget and to also systematically help to make improvements, and I think that seems like a really practical next step as we head into the next year, and I appreciate it. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a great next step. Would it be a good retreat topic, maybe?
Well, that would be a great segue into our next matter from the board.
Can I say one more?
I was gonna say one thing, too, so.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So I, I just wanted to say, Brady, I really appreciate, I don't want to say it in front of the board, all, all the, you know, the attention you've paid to the budget, I think we all do, but you've, you've really hit it with a fine-tooth comb, and it's been awesome, and it's helped me understand the budget better, just following along with what you've been doing and analyzing it, and, and I hadn't really thought of it in the sort of, you know, beryum in paper, you know, the lawyer trick.
Not that that was intentional, not that it was intentional.
Right. But I hadn't, hadn't thought of it that way at all, and it is, it, you know, it's a weird position to be in because, you know, we're, we're bored, and we don't get to direct staff, and so we can't demand that we get things digested. But, but I do appreciate what you're saying about, you know, being able to make things plain, because I think one of our key features, one of our key roles as the Open Space Board is daylighting what would otherwise be a, you know, $38 million black box. We do that every year, multiple times through the touches that we do on the budget and then approving the budget. And, and so I think getting things made clear, broken into bite-sized pieces, I know it's more work for you, Lauren, and, and Charlotte's gonna.
Yeah.
Potentially have to be more responsive to our interest in the data and, and really And, and really show that, you know, she's not just tabulating everything in a five-hundred-page spreadsheet, but she understands it too. And it's like the old expression about like, if, if you can't explain it and what your grandma can understand it, and I hate how this makes grandma seem like they're pretty simple people, you know, then you don't understand it, right? You have to be able to understand it to people as thick as me, as board, board members. And I, I'd like to see more of that too.
So one last little comment. I, I had an opportunity to discuss this with one of our city council members. And this person mentioned that, well, at CU, cost allocation typically for incoming dedicated funds is fifty-one percent, something on that order. And this person said, I hope it never gets to that point.
Fifty-one?
And, and for a council person to say they hope, it, it tells me that they don't think they have any control over this. And now, you know, what is the right and, and proper role of, of council versus the city manager in determining these things? I don't know, but I think we need to be tracking this. Because if there's one thing I'm sure of, this is never going to go backwards. Once it's fourteen percent, it's never going to be thirteen. Once it's twenty percent, it's never going to be nineteen. That's the way, that's the way the university got to fifty-one percent. And that's, that is, this is not alarmist. That is the trajectory we're on in a, in a continuing budget-constrained environment. And with a council that may not see this as being their, their job. And so I do think it's our, our job not to be myopic, but to be the watchdogs on these dedicated funds and to bring these things to the attention of the decision-makers and the public. And then that's why city council gets paid those big bucks. Anyway, I, thank you for listening.
Yeah, no, and, and I don't want to just keep jumping back on the bandwagon. But, you know, the other piece is that with that better explanation of where this money is going, you know, we can understand that even if it is fourteen percent, you know, maybe all fourteen of those percents are for legitimate open space purposes. They're just for things like, you know, lawyers drafting conservation easements. And the, the problem is we're not seeing enough of that to know. Now, once it gets to fifty-one percent, chances are, you know, the central office is profiteering off of what should otherwise be your dedicated fund. But I think it, you know, where we are right now at seven percent, where we're headed according to the budget at thirteen, you know, there's still some potential that this is all money that's really being used for open space purposes, but we just don't see through it. And that's the, the transparency piece that, that I'm, I think the most concerned about. Want to say another thing?
I had an actual question. I, thank you, Dan, for this memo on the updated budget. I, of course, was very happy to hear more in response to a question I had specifically raised about the wildfire budgets and whether we have enough and how this is all being allocated cross-departmentally. And I'm really happy that we are raising that banner as well through this budget conversation. So thank you for this follow-up. My question is, when is, when will this be reviewed? I know, it just says fall in general. Do you happen to know the city council dates?
There's a study session tomorrow night, which would be sort of the formal kickoff of deliberations. So there's a three-hour study session just on 2026 budget tomorrow night. Of the three meetings that are typically budget-related, tomorrow night's a, a pretty good one. It's a digestible one. It's, it's pretty broad in nature. Then there's, then you get into the approval process. And in October, there's a first reading and a second reading of the budget. The first reading is primarily, it's where the public hearing is held. And it's primarily where eighty percent, ninety percent of, if the council is going to be digging in and suggesting any changes, any refinements, they want to see to the city manager recommended budget, it will happen during first reading. Someone give me a date on that, I believe it's.
I'm trying to pull it now, but it's usually their first October meeting.
I just don't want to pull out my, my nineteen ninety-two Day Timer. But yeah, two readings in October. And pay attention more closely to the first reading, which is in early October, Thursday night. I will pull it out.
Dan, while you're doing that.
That's okay, yeah, thank you.
While you're doing that, Dan, thanks for the thoughtful memo on the budget and where we stand with it now. Appreciate that.
October ninth.
It's October ninth.
This is the first reading. And then October twenty-third would be the second and possible final reading. I've seen a third reading have, have to happen. That's more on the uncommon side, but it does happen. So if they can't wrap it up with a, a clean budget to review at second reading, there'll possibly could be a third reading and, which could spill over the following week or next after that.
Well, good on that topic. Any other, before we move to the second item under Board Matters, any other unlisted board matters? Nope, nope. Okay, so the only other item under Matters from the Board is just an update on the retreat. Brady, do you want to kick it off or you want me to?
Sure, sure. We had lunch with Dan and discussed retreat ideas. Our retreat will be at White Rocks. Now, I've never been there. What's the facility like? Dan, could you tell us a little bit about it?
White Rocks is a, a site in which Ricky Weiser was a property owner for many years. Ricky was a sort of a, a very well-known open space advocate and environmentalist. We acquired the Weiser property and with that property came a residence in which Ricky lived in. That is now an OSMP managed resident. And we will be holding our retreat at the residence itself. It's right on the White Rocks Formation, which is an ecologically very unique formation, very fragile. It's, we open it to the public for guided hikes. It's very hard to get into a guided hike. And so it would be a great opportunity for us to learn more about the White Rocks area itself from an ecological standpoint. But it's also a very rich culturally, from a cultural resource perspective. And I know this board has been anxious to dive and, and maybe some field trips around cultural resources. So we're looking for an opportunity to maybe utilize this site location in order to do some of that. And that's what we discussed at lunch the other day, but yeah.
Is it spooky at all out there?
Is it spooky? It can be.
It can be, because it's going to be Halloween.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Luckily, it'll be in the daytime.
Are, are we dressing up, wearing costumes?
That is the topic du jour here, yeah. We can, we can noodle on that one until our next meeting.
Dress is your favorite OSMP topic.
I'm sorry?
Dress is your favorite OSMP topic.
Oh, my God, that'd be funny.
I'll be a prairie dog.
We heard from Michelle and John a few ideas on potential topics. So we do have a handful of, probably three time slots to, to dive into something. And Dan, I think our normal procedure is to, is to get input, put it all into a matrix, send it around, and then we would discuss that at our next meeting. So that's kind of where we're at. And so, yeah, if you haven't sent in your thoughts and have some, please do so. And we will circulate the topics and a draft agenda and we'll finalize it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the one thing that Harmon and Brady and I did circle around that maybe it would be good just to get a pulse is we've kind of used the, let's get out and stretch and do a little walk and talk. And at One Lillan Lake, we walked up, you know, a couple hundred yards, Paul talked. Same thing at Chautauqua last year, we walked up Blue Bell a little bit and then came back. Because of the uniqueness of this area, the interest of wanting to dive a little bit more into cultural resources, which we haven't had a chance to do yet, we were thinking of more of an expanded opportunity to get out and connect outdoors. And so maybe that's something we want to get a feel for, from this group. Because if we, you know, instead of going out for twenty minutes, we, we go out for sixty, is that something that is of interest to this board in order to do? Because, so.
And, and our, our cultural resource policy is part of the agenda in 2026, is it not?
We are launching, starting to begin the drafting of our cultural resource management plan.
So that would presumably be something we could talk about in the field while we're.
Yeah, we could just, you know, determine, oh, we've never had one? Why do we need one? You know, that type of stuff. We wouldn't probably dive into subject matters of, because we don't have anything on the plan yet. But yeah, we could certainly provide a, a sense of what that is.
I'm definitely open to, to being out in the field. I would just ask that we either be moving, like, or, or we have a place to sit. Because like, standing, we, the field trip was great on Monday, but like, standing and listening was just kind of hard. I have really bad feet. So I just wanted, I just would want, ask that we be moving or we have some place to sit down or park for a little while.
So we will not look askance at you if you bring one of those folding camp stools for when we stop and talk. Another, another thing that we talked about, and first I want to, I want to say that, you know, John and Sarah, because you were not present at the last meeting, it was, it was really by the grace of Brady that we didn't just make you to the, the subcommittee and just have you come back to find out that you were the retreat subcommittee. But Brady and I did take care of it largely because Brady wanted to. Thank you. And, and when we were talking with Dan, one of the things that we talked about was maybe breaking a little bit of this recent tradition of every board member has a forty-five-minute slot where they sort of lead a discussion. You have to prepare and then lead the discussion and answer questions and stuff like that. But, you know, rather, we've, we get a lot of really good information in our monthly meetings here with staff and with public. And a retreat can be a time to sort of check in with each other. And so we wanted to have a little bit more of an opportunity to do that as part of the agenda and then the walk. And so maybe a little less information-heavy and a little more, you know, sort of traditional retreat, like what's working, what's not. And then also using some of the time to think about what our priorities are, both to check in with each other about what our priorities are and also to potentially help us with the annual letter that we may or may not have to write this year to city council, depending on what they ask for. But it's good to know sort of what we think the OSPT's priorities ought to be for the upcoming year in preparation for, for that letter. So does, does that sort of focus sound good to folks? Okay, all right. Brady, do you have any final thoughts or you want to hand it over to staff? I noticed actually, just one more thing, that we have a presentation for every written item that's in the packet. So I don't see any reason to talk about board comments on written items because we're going to get to talk to each one of them with a presentation today. So Dan, you want to pick the agenda up from here?
Yeah, so we're going to be moving on from matters from the board to matters from the department. And we actually have guests today, some non-open space folks who are going to support this first item from matters from the department. And as you know, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, this is the time for a major update to the, to the comprehensive plan. And that effort is led by staff from Planning and Development Services. They're a long-range comprehensive planning staff. And Christopher Johnson is going to be presenting you all, hopefully giving you a, a little bit of sense of background on the comprehensive plan. But then as he, this month, talks to other boards, has some, we have some specific questions for this board as it pertains to the comprehensive plan that we want to tease out. I'll, I'll mention that in, in terms of planning and development, leading this effort. We have a, a staff team that's trying to support the effort and provide support for KJ and his team. And Joshua Schnabel, who's our, one of our new planners with Open Space and Mountain Parks, is our point person into the citywide effort. And so Josh can help support tonight's conversation as well. But, so it'll be a mix of sort of overview of comprehensive plan, what it is, and then try to narrow it down a little bit about to some open space elements within the comprehensive plan. So with that, and, but there's more. I would like to talk a little bit more about the comprehensive plan.
Just give us one minute on the tech.
Yeah. So in addition to going to boards this, who? Yep. This month, we've already begun discussions with the community and we've had study sessions with council. And so it's a process that although still has months and months of work ahead of itself, has also been already meeting with a lot of the stakeholders. How did I do? You did great, all right.
And I have, I have now joined the meeting thankfully, which I thought I'd done earlier, but had not. And I'm pulling up a presentation for everybody. There we go, okay. Thank you, Dan, thank you for that introduction. And thank you for having me this evening. As Dan mentioned, my name is Christopher Johnson. I'm the comprehensive planning manager. So I oversee the team that does all of our long-range land use planning within Planning and Development Services. Our historic preservation program is also under my wing. And you may have had a few run-ins with Val Matheson, who oversees our prairie dog and other urban wildlife permitting processes. So as Dan mentioned, we are in the process now where we are going around and having these introductory meetings with most of the boards that advise our key departments within, within the city. We are in the middle of what we're calling the Board Roadshow right now in the month of September. You are the fourth out of eight. So you should feel good. We're over the hump here after tonight. We're on the downhill slope. But the purpose for tonight is really just to provide you with an overview of the comprehensive plan so that you have some background and understanding of what it is and then walk you through this update process that we are engaged in right now. And then we'll be looking for your feedback on the approach that we have proposed and that we've been working with staff from other departments on reviewing and updating the policies that are within the comprehensive plan. And then some potential land use changes that we'll get into later this evening that we are also considering. There's no formal decision that we're requesting at this moment. So this is really intended to be open discussion as we move forward. So the role of, or actually, sorry, just a quick outline on what we'll talk about this evening. I'll really quickly kind of cover the role of boards and commissions and then also of, of staff through this process. Again, provide you a bit, brief overview of the plan itself and then the process we are working through. And then go through this approach to policy updates and a draft concept to make some changes to the land use designations and the land use map. The role of the boards and commissions as part of this process, there are four adopting bodies of the comprehensive plan. This is actually fairly unique in that it is a shared, joint jurisdictional plan between the City of Boulder and Boulder County. The four adopting bodies are our city planning board, city council, and then on the county side, their planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. For the most part, all of our advisory boards are just that, they are advisory. However, Open Space Board of Trustees has a bit of a more formal role in that, per the city charter, you make recommendations, formal recommendations concerning any open space-related changes. So that could be any changes to the policies that reference or involve open space and of course, the land use designations that would also apply to open space as well. Your role is really to assist staff and us in identifying and helping to shape any changes to relevant policies that are within your particular topic area. And then towards the end, as we get towards, into the adoption process, we will be looking for a formal recommendation, hopefully from all of our boards, to carry the comprehensive plan forward through that adoption process. The role of staff is really to work with us. We recognize that within the comprehensive planning team, we are not experts in all the things that we do as a city. We are not experts in transportation or climate or environmental preservation, things, things of this nature. And so really, we have gathered together an incredible team of subject, subject matter experts from all of our departments. They're meeting with us as staff regularly throughout this process. We've had a number of different workshops and we'll have several more before we actually develop the draft plan. And we're leaning on them to be the direct liaison between our staff and all of you on advisory boards and then also department leadership as well. Their role is really to help offer a direction on any desired revisions that are based on the most recent conversations within the department, with, with department leader, leadership, and then also with all of you. If there are emerging trends or new, you know, new directions that advisory boards are interested in moving or department leadership, then funnels through that subject matter expert group and then ultimately to us. And at the end, they will help develop our staff recommendations and then actually write some of that initial policy language so that we then, as the comprehensive planning team, can incorporate and collate all that information into what will eventually become the overall draft comprehensive plan. So jumping into what is a comprehensive plan, which again, some of us that sort of live in this, this land use world is, is fairly familiar to us, but I know many of you don't live in this world on a regular basis. And so just really broadly speaking, comprehensive plans are aspirational plans that are intended to describe a community's long-term vision over about a twenty-year time horizon. They really help to guide how that community evolves and changes over time. They establish policies that address both current and future needs. And then also will include some information and provide a framework for how that community can change over time in support of that. in support of that overall vision. So this little graphic here shows that comprehensive plans really should sort of fly at that 30,000-foot level, right? They provide that overarching policy guidance for a community. Within Boulder, we then also have things called subcommunity and area plans, which get down into a bit more detail. They hone in on a specific geography or location. And then eventually you get down kind of into that ground level, which again, within the city, is managed through our zoning and municipal code. So that's really what governs the types of uses, the form of buildings, height limits, all the other kinds of things that you can think of, particularly related to the built environment. As far as the open space program, I would say, you know, obviously the county regulations are going to be a bit more relevant to many of, much of your work and in terms of the types of things that can and can't be done on the land, also the open space charter. And within open space, there's also this sort of hierarchy of plans that get into greater and greater levels of detail of how you manage those properties. Overall, the comprehensive plan sits below what is called the Sustainability Equity and Resilience Framework, and that may be a new term for some of you. But within the City of Boulder, we have developed through the city manager's office something called the Sustainability Equity and Resilience Framework or the SER Framework. You might hear me refer to that or the SER goals. That really guides at the highest level the way that the city operates and the way we make decisions internally to move our community forward. The comprehensive plan sits really just below that. So that, those goals and really high overarching vision within the SER framework translates down into the comprehensive plan. And then that feeds then further down into more of the operational work that we do in the city. So that guides our citywide strategic plan, which is more on that three- to five-year timeframe. It flows into our budgeting process, any individual department plans and program plans, and ultimately down into our operating budgets and the CIP program, things like that of really kind of the day-to-day work that we do. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, as I mentioned, is a jointly adopted document that covers both the City of Boulder and the immediately surrounding area within unincorporated county, roughly three miles or so, sort of outside the boundary of the city. One of the unique things about the comprehensive plan is that back in 1977, this framework for planning areas was established as part of the comprehensive plan. So we sort of see that 1977 plan kind of as the original comprehensive plan. Area 1 defines the City of Boulder, so that's everything that's within the city limits and receives all of the urban services from the city, so police, fire, utilities, transportation, et cetera. That's where urban development is appropriate and is focused. Area 2 includes some already developed, primarily residential subdivisions that are in the county but are directly adjacent to the city. Those are already eligible for annexation into the city at some point in the future if they choose. In most cases, they already receive some city services, so they might receive water or sewer or sometimes both, but they don't receive the full complement of urban services from the city. And then finally, Area 3, which you can see in the green, is primarily the open space system. But it also includes county-owned open space and also privately-owned lands out in the rural portions of the county. There are two sort of flavors of Area 3. So the rural preservation area really is the green belt, is that growth boundary that surrounds the city and provides that rural character. And then the planning reserve, you can see on the graphic, is kind of a light green area right up at the northern end of the city. This is about a 500-acre area of land that back in the 90s was identified as an area that the city could potentially expand to or expand into at some point in the future. There's a whole separate process related to the planning reserve as to whether or not, you know, the city will move into that area, et cetera. The city owns about roughly half of that land. Right now, it was purchased actually with Parks funding, so right now it is owned and managed by the Parks Department.
Could I ask you a question on the map? Is Area 3 annexed anywhere on the map and can you point it out if so?
Yeah, sure. I did not point that one out just because it's a bit of an awkward one in that it is Area 3. It is open space-owned and so it is and will continue to be used for open space purposes. But for one reason or another, it was annexed into the city boundary. So there are portions of open space that are within the city. They're relatively few and far between, but they do exist.
Our Cherryvale campus is probably the most well-known example. So our Cherryvale site where our rangers are, that's Area 3 annexed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Great question. So the comprehensive plan, as you would imagine, it is comprehensive in nature. It covers all the things that happen within a community. So built environment, natural environment, energy, economy, et cetera. This is the current structure of the plan as it exists today. The last major update was in the 2015-2017 timeframe, and then we go through a midterm update on a five-year cadence. The major updates happen every 10 years. And so this is the current organization, pretty traditional. You know, it's organized around these major topic areas. And this is all the things that it covers today. There are, if you're interested in knowing, there are 210 current policies within the comprehensive plan. It's about 150 or so pages long, pretty complicated actually, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The other thing that's included within the comprehensive plan are maps. And so that, the map and kind of the service areas that we just spoke about, that is called the Planning Areas Map that identifies those areas 1, 2, and 3 within the comprehensive plan. And then the other plan that is included within the map is the Future Land Use Map, the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. You can see that in the center. I included, and I've kind of scaled this back just visually, the zoning map that is related back to the Boulder Revised Code on the right-hand side of this. The reason I included that is that oftentimes land use and zoning can get confused. And what I want to just reinforce is that the land use map that lives within the comprehensive plan is intended to be very broad and very forward-looking and establish a vision. The zoning map is really the regulatory piece that governs what you can and cannot do on your property. That said, I will point out and you'll probably notice that those two maps are actually very, very detailed and they look very, very similar. And so that's something that we'll talk about here shortly. So the major update process that we are involved in, we began in October of last year and we have organized this around four major phases. The first phase, what we call the Boulder Today, was really about looking at existing conditions, orienting the community to, you know, what is the current state of the city? That happened last, at the end of last year. We moved into a Boulder Tomorrow, which was really about that, big vision thinking, thinking about and also identifying what areas of focus were people most interested in talking about, what are the priorities among the community members that they're interested in really addressing through the comprehensive plan. And we are now in Phase 3 or called Boulder Direction, which is really kind of the heart of the project where we are looking at different policy options, weighing those different outcomes, understanding what the trade-offs are, having those conversations with all of you and with our policymakers and with the community. And then ultimately, we'll land on recommended approaches and recommended direction that will then go into the final documentation of the plan and to that adoption process. Our goal is to have our major recommendations completed by the end of the year or earliest part of next year so that then we can draft the plan and release a full and complete draft plan by the spring in the March timeframe. And then ultimately, take feedback, revise that, and then move forward with an adoption process in the summer of next year. This is probably one of, if not the, most extensive engagement processes that the city goes through and particularly on this 10-year cadence. So the update to the comprehensive plan is where we invest an enormous amount of time and energy and time and energy into connecting with the community, hearing from people that we don't typically hear from. We've hosted, as of, actually as of last night, that should now be 42 engagement opportunities. We had a community event last night at Casey Middle School. We've received over 5,000 individual responses through a variety of different techniques, whether they be online questionnaires or online meetings, in-person meetings. A lot of our kind of work sessions and inter-agency coordination has been occurring as well. So we're doing everything we can to try to broaden the tent to the best of our ability and bring all of that feedback into the work that we're doing. We have landed on a draft vision statement, which is our community works together to ensure that everyone belongs, to create opportunities for all, and to sustain the health of the Boulder Valley for future generations. We have a number of goals also organized around that SER framework that I mentioned earlier. There are seven goal areas within that SER framework. And we're kind of organizing a lot of our conversations and thinking about actually organizing the comprehensive plan around these topics as well and looking at different ways so you can sort the information in a different way than it works today. But we want to create that really clear linkage between the SER framework, the comprehensive plan, and then ultimately down into our city operational needs as well. So I'm going to move into a couple of our approaches to changes. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples, just so that if you're not terribly familiar with the comprehensive plan, you can understand maybe why we're suggesting a different way might be appropriate at this moment. Right now, the current policy framework, as I mentioned, there are 210 policies within the document. They tend to include a lot of additional context and information that is not always relevant or necessary to the policy. I'm picking on our team a little bit, our Planning and Development Services team. This is a policy related to land use and the Boulder Valley Regional Center, which is essentially the 29th Street Mall and that area around there. I've highlighted what I believe is the policy, which is the city will preserve and enhance the Boulder Valley Regional Center as a high-intensity regional commercial center while encouraging the addition of a variety of housing types. Done. Like that's all that really needs to be said. That is the policy direction. The rest of this really gets into descriptions of how you might achieve that. It uses a lot of technical language and jargon. It's really just not very usable by the average community member. Quite honestly, it's not terribly usable by staff either or policymakers because you have to sift through all of that language and information to try to get to the heart of what is really the policy. So the approach that we have challenged ourselves and all of our subject matter experts as we're reviewing the policies is how do we make these clear? So how do we limit some of the redundancy and the conflicts and the complexity that are in the document today? How do we make them simple? How do we make the plan much easier to read and use by all of our users? So that includes our community members but also development industry folks, staff, policymakers, all of you as well. And then how do we make it more resilient? Right now, it's really, really detailed, really specific. So how do we, you know, rise back up to that 30,000-foot level so that the land use strategy and the policies contain an appropriate level of detail that can guide our decisions but also not limit us as we move forward and conditions change? I mean, this document has a 20-year time horizon. We won't do another major update for 10 years. So it has to be adaptable to, you know, the way the world changes these days. We provided you, and Josh and the rest of the OSMP team provided you with some read-ahead materials and they shared an exercise that we went through a couple of months ago with all of our departments to look at all the various policies and go through this exercise of keep, modify, or toss, or don't keep it. And really, the purpose of that was to highlight and identify those policies that are critical and are worded well and that we should just carry over and keep as they are. Those that had great intent but really need some refinement might be able to be combined with other policies so that we can, again, reduce some of that complexity and redundancy. And then those that maybe don't need to be in the comprehensive plan, and it's not that they were bad ideas at all. Actually, we want to carry a lot of those forward, but it's just that they are more appropriate to include in other locations, whether that be the open space master plan or other department plans, other opportunities for that kind of information to live elsewhere. I'm going to move to the land use framework then. So that was policies. Really, the other major component of the comp plan is the land use framework. Today, as I mentioned, you can see the map is very, very detailed. There are 26 different land use designations that describe everything from, you know, very low-density residential up to mixed, we have four flavors of mixed use. Explain that one to me. Yeah. And, you know, a lot of other different land use descriptions that are really, really specific to a very kind of narrow-focused use type. They tend to also describe a combination of both existing, what's on the ground today, and future land use, whereas this is really intended to be and should be a forward-looking and future land use map. It's highly, highly detailed. It's almost on a parcel-by-parcel basis. I will say the Alpine-Balsam area where the new Western City Campus is being built is a perfect example of maybe what not to do because within that two-block area, there are, I believe, eight or nine different land use categories that are applied and it's really overwhelming. And then also just some of the definitions for the designations are overlapping. As I mentioned, we have four flavors of mixed use, very, very sort of subtle and nuanced differences between them. I'm not really sure why we have all four. So the approach to the land use updates is similar to that policy approach in that we want to right-size this to a neighborhood scale rather than on this parcel-by-parcel basis and also really try to differentiate and identify unique land use categories. So how can we be very clear about what each of these means and try to reduce some of that overlap? And then again, back to resiliency. So how do we keep the designations really broadly defined, move away from that really, that kind of traditional single-use category and allow for multiple future outcomes that are still consistent with that overall vision for the designation and for the community as a whole? So I mentioned there are 26 today, 26 different land use designations. We have a preliminary framework that we shared with Planning Board and Council a couple of weeks ago. Actually, went through an exercise with community members last night at this event. But we're thinking about re-envisioning what that structure looks like and building this into four general categories of neighborhoods, hubs, networks, and institutions, and then some clearly-defined designations beneath that. You will see that there is one land use designation under the network category that's been identified for open space. Right now, today, there are three different open space categories and they tend to be based more on the ownership of the land and less on the use of the property. So OSA or Open Space Acquired applies to all the land that is owned and managed by OSMP, and that could be some of those, that Area 3 Annex area, so they might be within the city boundary, but most of that, the vast majority, is going to be outside in the unincorporated county. There's also something called OSVR, Open Space Development Rights or Restrictions, which tends to be applied to private land parcels that may have a conservation easement or some other restriction that OSMP oversees. And then OSO or Open Space Other is a bit of an anomaly. And I'll walk through a little bit of this history with OSO, but it also applies to private land. It identifies areas that may have open space value in the future that OSMP is interested in keeping track of. But as you will see, there's also some problems with the OSO designation, and so this is an opportunity for us to reassess that and clean that up. So the initial proposal right now, as it stands today, which again, is very conceptual, very draft at this point, we're still working through a lot of the nuance, would be to migrate that OSA or Open Space Acquired designation into that new open space land use under the networks category. The OSVR and the OSO categories or land use designations would be migrated into something that we're still working on the name, but an open space values or a natural systems overlay. So essentially, what that would do is it would move So essentially, what that would do is it would move those categories out of the land use map because they create quite a bit of confusion about what the future use of those properties um can be and move that into a separate map, into a separate overlay. And that does a couple of things um for us, which I'm gonna talk about. But before I talk about that, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on uh on O S O and sort of how it came to be. Um so back in the early eighties, uh and uh Josh was just mentioning he was looking at the old nineteen seventy-seven comprehensive land, and there's a map that you can fold out, and you can see basically where people took the zipitone markers and drew with big fat, you know, big fat markers on a map of like, here's the areas that are were excited and interested about uh related to open space. And you can think, too, the open space tax was just passed uh in the late sixties, and so this was this was in the early days of the open space system where O S M P was still doing a lot of kind of proactive acquisition um and uh um you know, looking for areas to be acquired in and brought into the system. Uh in the nineties, the open space map uh was then combined with the with the comprehensive plan land use map, so that's when all of that sort of got merged with the future land use. Uh and then in the mid-nineties, um at the advent of this cool thing called a computer, we started to digitize um those hand-drawn maps into into our G I S system. Um in the two thousands was when the different flavors of open space were really uh defined and created, so roughly twenty-five years ago. Uh and what we find today, when we open up our our G I S map and we take a look at O S O, you can see there's a lot of these really kind of strange artifacts um from those original hand-drawn maps, how those got translated into a digital format. They don't follow parcel boundaries or anything like that. So it there's there's just there's a lot of um potential errors, but there's also there's also some areas that are still um potentially have some open space value that we want to make sure that we're that we're tracking and keeping an eye on. Um this is the current uh definition for O S O, just as a as a reference for all of you. It's pretty vague. Uh it says that the designation applies to other public and private land designated prior to nineteen eighty-one that the city and county would like to preserve through various preservation methods, including but not limited to uh I G A's dedications or acquisitions. By itself, this designation does not ensure open space protection. So it creates some confusion, um you know, from the user of the document. They see a land use designation that says open space, and they think, oh, well, that needs to remain open space into the future. But then you get into the nuance and the details of it, and it's kind of confusing, like, can I do something there or not? Um and then here's just a couple of images of some of the artifacts that I'm talking about. Um that, you know, on this lower-left-hand side, what you're seeing cutting across this green box is the railroad. And there's an O S O designation that is a holdover from, you know, a a drawing many, many years ago that was just never cleaned up, that applies a um, you know, an open space value to a portion of the railroad right of way. Um another example here in the center, this happens to be C U property, their East Campus. And when that um was developed and the land use was changed uh to a public land use, there's a sliver of O S O that runs along the southern portion of the boundary that is essentially the sidewalk and and the curb of of um Colorado Boulevard, I think is what that is. So um at the same time, so there's you know, there's these kinds of errors and thing and cleanup items that we need to address, but at the same time, this happens to be on the right-hand image, this is the area that is around N Car. So that obviously does have open space value, and we want to make sure that we are um keeping an eye on that, and if there ever were to be any types of changes related to that property, we want to make sure that we have our eyes on it um and can can manage that going forward. So I had mentioned that uh idea of migrating the O S O layer and the O S D R layer to this overlay, and a couple of things that that helps us do. It supports the goals of creating more clarity within the land use definitions and the map, so it removes some of that ambiguity about what those what those things mean um and provides some uh simplification of the map. It also reduces some confusion about uh those future use of those properties, as I mentioned. So again, by removing that open space designation out of the map itself, um it it helps remove some of that confusion. And then, most importantly, it continues to identify those properties that may have some open space value, and so whenever there is any kind of a development application submitted or anything that comes in our door in the Planning and Development Services door, that throws a flag. We're able to reach out to O S M P staff and they can participate um in that process. So I know that was a ton of information, and um I'm gonna be here to answer a lot of your uh questions, but just a couple of quick highlights on kind of upcoming milestones. As I mentioned, we had this community workshop last night at Casey Middle School. Um there's gonna be a statistically valid survey that is gonna be hitting mailboxes next week. It's being printed as we speak. So keep your eye on that. Um if you don't receive a invitation to take that survey, there'll be an online companion that'll be open to everyone that'll open uh the following week, September twenty-second. It'll be available on uh our website. And then we are scheduled to make some uh a presentation and bring forward some staff recommendations to Planning Board and Council in December. Then we get into uh twenty-twenty-six and more um really cycling of the recommendations, preparation of that of that actual draft plan, which will be released in uh the first or second of March, and we'll have a full month with community members and all of you uh to go through that draft plan. So that is the plan for our um uh this team coming back to you and having additional conversations about the draft plan, about the draft policies, uh getting that feedback from you so that then we can revise it in the April-May timeframe and then carry that forward for adoption. Um and this is just a plug for our website. It's called theboulderfuture.org. There literally is anything and everything about this whole process is available there. Um all of our engagement events, uh the questionnaire, as I mentioned, will be posted there. Um and any other uh information or F A Qs that you're interested in learning about the process, um you can find there. And you can also email us at any time uh as can uh any member of the community at future@bouldercolorado.gov. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Christopher. Appreciate it and belated welcome.
Thank you.
Um does anybody want to start off with any questions?
Oh, I do have questions. I forgot.
Brady?
Um I I know you you mentioned Area One, Two, and Three in the Planning Reserve.
Yeah.
Um very specific questions. If the city owns half the land of the planning reserve, who owns the other half? Um and then the sec- but the more important one is, to what extent does the comprehensive plan inform what happens to the planning reserve?
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, middle-income housing is is a big topic of discussion right now, and so I'm just curious, how does that play in all that? And then also, do we have a role as O S B T with within that?
Yeah, so uh so right now, it's the Planning Reserve is roughly five hundred acres. It's a little bit less than that. The city owns um I think off the top of my head, I think it's about two hundred and twenty acres. So I think it's about a hundred and ninety are owned by Parks. Uh there's another thirty-acre parcel that Housing and Human Services actually has purchased in the past. The the remainder of that area is um privately-owned. Um there's forty to fifty uh private landowners out in that area, you know, generally, as you would expect, large lot. Um you know, rural residential um in that particular area. There's not um there's not a significant subdivision or anything that exists out there today. The comprehensive plan's role in this process is really to identify um we are in the second step of a three-step process to analyze whether or not expansion into the planning reserve is something that the city is interested in doing. Um what that means as far as the comprehensive plan goes is we're doing something. Um the second step of that process is called a community needs study. So as part of the comp plan update, we we are assessing the community needs really across the board, but then also we will be doing a more um targeted evaluation of the community needs and how the planning reserve could or could not help to serve those. Um there are some procedures in the back of the comprehensive plan that identify three criteria of um how you evaluate need, and so we'll be actually bringing that forward for a public hearing with Planning Board and Council in January and going through that process. If they determine that there is a need and that the planning reserve is essential to meeting that need, then essentially what they would do is they would uh make a recommendation that we introduce a policy within the comprehensive plan that basically says, keep going. Um and the third step is something called a service area expansion plan, which is really just a long name for we need to do another planning effort that is specific to the planning reserve that would really identify and detail out those land uses and things like that. So the comprehensive plan will not get into a detailed analysis of um the future use of the planning reserve. Only through that third step would we really get into the details on what does that want to be? Um and then your last question on the role of O S B T, I don't believe there is any open space owned land within the planning reserve. I could be wrong on that, but there certainly is open space land that is directly around and adjacent to it. So I do think there would be some uh role for you as far as analysis of particularly if there are um eventually additional trail connections or other kind of relationships between whatever would happen on the planning reserve and that adjacent open space land.
Uh I'm one other question. Yep, go ahead.
So as as you get into the discussions about the open the um planning reserve, is there any thought that you could come up with sort of a hybrid um where, you know, there's enough privately-owned uh undeveloped land within the planning reserve? You know, those owners could come forward for annexation, and the city's two hundred and twenty acres could remain open, and that would meet the the requirements that we have now for additional developable land?
Uh potentially, yeah. We're going through some of that analysis right now. Um and uh as I mentioned, the the majority of that two hundred and twenty acres is is managed by Parks and was purchased with Parks funding, and so um it would have a role as a as a Parks facility into the future unless they went through a process similar to open space of disposal and, you know, it causes some challenges of how do you pay the fund back and do all the things. But um yeah, but but um essentially, your your point is correct that um the evolution of that area could include some urban development, but also some open lands, whether for open space or Parks purposes.
Okay, all right. And I want to give Michelle a chance to jump in, and we can go around the board. Okay.
Hi, Christopher. Thanks for boiling it down for us. I know I've always been intimidated about uh whenever we talk about the Boulder Comprehensive Plan because it is very comprehensive. Um the the um supplement that we got over email that talks about the the policies that are going to be kept or you're proposing to keep, modify, um like or don't keep. So how how like, there's one under um, it's called adaptive management. Um and it's under, it's three-point-oh-two. Um and it's it's under natural environment. Like, why why would you decide to just remove? Uh what's the the reasoning around removing that particular policy? Is is it redundant, or is it conflicting somewhere else in the the plan?
Yeah, I'd have to look specifically at that policy itself. Um I think that it's possible that one may have been identified for the modify and combine um as opposed to just um removal. And so I think through that analysis and and as we were working through that, we identified a number of situations where there were great kernels of ideas across multiple policies that had either, you know, shared similarities around a particular topic, and so there was an opportunity to take two, three, even four policies and combine those into a single one that can be clearer and more direct about, you know, what is it that we're trying to achieve? Um so that-
It's not like you're not you're getting rid of adaptive management when-
Correct, right, right, right. Yeah, because I I can I I can give another example, I believe, off the top of my head. There um if I remember correctly, there's a there's a policy in the transportation section related to Vision Zero and the creation of a Vision Zero plan, and we had worked with our transportation staff to identify that as one that we would actually remove. And it's not because Vision Zero is a bad idea or that the city's position on Vision Zero has changed. It's just that the plan has already been created, uh and that is just embedded within our transportation departments. Uh their own transportation master plan and their own philosophy towards moving forward of how we um how we manage transportation in the city going forward. So it basically, we identified that it doesn't necessarily need to be reinforced and live within the comprehensive plan because it already is captured in in several other locations.
Gotcha. Is that is that sort of the same situation with soil carbon sequestration because we've kind of operational like operationalized our approach to it, that that's why you decided to-
I assume that's correct. If Josh can remember off the top of his head on that one in particular, but.
Um that was marked for don't keep, and I think, well, we had breakout groups within O S M P uh among staff to review some of these proposed changes uh to the the draft policies. And um a lot of staff were able to suggest additional clarity or um just articulation around some of the ways that the language contained within those policies was written. Um and so rather than not keeping the policies, sometimes that um identification is a bit of a misnomer. It's being combined with other policies or being recrafted. The existing policy within the B V C P as it's currently written isn't being kept, but the intent uh remains within the the update, the the major update.
Okay, thank you.
Either of you guys have a question before I go back to Brady?
I I do.
Go for it, John.
Um so so when I'm reading this, and I apologize, I may have stepped out to go to the restroom when you said this, but so this is a uh the the natural um systems overlay would have some underlying layer that would differentiate between like open space other or open space development rights. We would just be simplifying it kind of the the top layer.
E- e- exactly, yeah. So what what um you can imagine in most of those cases, a lot of that O S O layer um overlaps with agricultural land or other things that are rural lands out in the and uh in the unincorporated county. Um we've established or we're proposing to have a rural lands land use designation that would apply to those um locations out in the county. So in the land use map, it would show up as a rural lands land use designation because that's the use of the land going forward. But then through that uh natural systems or that open space values overlay, we'd again be able to highlight and identify that there could be portions of that property that may have open space value in the future so that if the county or the city ever received a development application on that property in the future, it gets flagged for O S M P staff to be part of that review process and be able to provide comments on that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I I think that does. So so like right now, that area would just be classified as O S O, but-
Correct.
We're kind of saying, you know, an area can have multiple different-
That's right.
Kind of l- labels on it.
That's right.
Okay, that makes sense.
For, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea, yeah.
Um this is it. There is in this supplement, the preliminary policy decisions read ahead, um three-point-two in the uh existing policy titled like menu is wildlife protection and management. When I scroll down, uh and I look at that down below, I believe it should be wildfire instead of wildlife, unless I'm just exhausted from my new puppy and I'm misreading things. I've checked it a couple of times. Am I just wildlife and wildfire are such similar words, but I I do believe there's um it looks like the upper menu is the incorrect one.
Yes.
Yeah, is that right?
The the menu on the front page.
Okay, I'm not trying to nitpick. It's just, okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks for calling that out.
Okay. Go for it, Brady.
Kind of fall up to John's question. Dan, this is for you. What in your view is the are there any unintended consequences for the consolidating these different open space designations, getting rid of the O S O, O S D R? Is there somebody who served on this board twenty years ago that's gonna come out of the woodwork? Um t- tell us, give us the kind of-
Yeah, I would say-
The pros and cons of this.
Yeah, well, the pros is is definitely the confusion that's out there. Um based on either errors or the fact that there could be a privately-owned uh rural lot out there that's got an O S O, and there's an assumption that that's protect open space, that's protected open space. And so there is a a we also get, we over the years, we've gotten a number of inquiries, they can't do that. That's open space. And so getting the just separating the word open space out of that nomenclature is gonna be tremendously helpful from a transparency standpoint that this is that parcel is actually not open space. Then you don't want to lose the fact that, but within that parcel, even though it's privately-owned, the city or the county does not have any management over it or any legal obligations over it, there could be some values of it that's uh that identified. And so we, how would we capture that if we changed the land use designation? And that's gonna be a cap uh captured through that overlay. So the main use for us right now of an O S O is is it it's a way to ping, like if there's ever a future change to that parcel that uh as a- Like if there's ever a future change to that parcel that as a either Boulder County or City of Boulder, that we became become aware of that. And we could then provide any comments of concerns that we may have for changing the use of that area. If that could be accomplished through the overlay and not be confused with that parcel being name tagged as open space, I think it's a win win. Yeah.
So Dan, when when there's a development application in current planning and they're reviewing it and it's got some OSO on it, do you get a referral packet?
We get, so yeah, we have staff that serve on the development review team. And we get referrals in a few different ways. That's one, another one would be as if we're an adjacent landowner. So if there's, even if it's not an OSO, if we own lands in the vicinity of it, we will also get a referral for it. So there's that sort of that tickler tickle system, tickler system of how to notify the development team, team members and which open space serves on that team.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, now that we've all asked our questions, let's start answering questions. Who's, who wants to address the key question number one on the screen? Go for it, Sarah.
Okay, so the question concerns or questions regarding which policies have been identified for retention in the new comprehensive plan versus those being combined, modified and or not carried forward. I I would like to, I would like to see, I had mentioned the wildfire versus wildlife. I'd like to see impact metrics. I'd like to see data driven approach to wildfire mitigation now that we are in a whole, it's a different world than it was 10 years ago in in regards to wildfire. And we're working hard on that as a department and as a city. So I'd love to see that float up into the plan. I also had a really great conversation recently, not about wildfire, actually, with the direct, the executive director of the hospital foundation. We were talking about mental health in the city. And I'm also hearing about mental health in a lot of different regards. And something struck me that for my own personal mental health, this open space has been a game changer. It's why I continue, have continued to live in this city for 25 years and chosen to raise my children here despite economic realities of doing so. There are there are trade offs, but I'd love to see for, I know that this is citywide, but I'd love for us as open space to consider inside of our own policies and our own approach to health and wellness. I'd love for us to consider our open spaces as a space for health and wellness. And then kind of that's a segue into the second piece we heard from families today about the importance of providing bike access for our youth. I I know a couple of us have young middle school boys here. And so we understand what it means to be on on bike and for the youth to have access to not being behind screens. This is also a totally different landscape than it was. So for young people of all ages, I think mental health, it is something that we are providing for this community. And I'd like for us to have more linkages into the community and to consider our different programming and all of the things that we're doing, even infrastructure wise, as it relates to mental health. Because we are in a mental health crisis in our country and even here in Boulder. And then the other thing I wanted to just flow to the top that I feel like somehow it always gets backburnered is agriculture and regenerative, regenerative agriculture in particular and food sources. And how we, because we as an open space have the opportunity to be an exemplar in in not only Colorado, but in the country for how communities can come together and support agriculture. So those are my, those are my key areas.
Awesome, thanks. So I'll just jump in. You know, one of the the things I saw in the to modify or combine was 2.04, the open space preservation policy. And you know, I think it's an older policy that talks about how the city and county will permanently preserve lands with open space values by purchasing or accepting donations. And you know, that's, that's really changed, you know. And if you, if you talk to open space mountain parks department, it's about maintaining what we have, making what we have better, not necessarily focusing on acquisition. And I think just consulting with Dan and his group to talk more currently about how open space is being. And I think the county is probably the same way at this point. And I also think that, you know, maybe it's because I'm on this board, but it could be written in a more boosterish fashion, you know, that this is, this is a, you know, a jewel in the crown of Boulder. You know, it it's meaningful. It it changes people's location decisions. You know, it's, it's a hallmark of the city. It's three times the size of the city, you know, it's like, there are things that can be said around this policy to really highlight how important it is and what it means to the community. So I just talked to Dan about that. Who's next? We're talking to number one. Michelle, oh, no? No? Okay, Brady, do you have any response to the combining and modifying carrying forward of policy?
No, I just say it's it's hard to know what, they're flagged, but I don't know what's going to happen.
Well, we don't because it says combine it or modify it.
So it's hard for me to have a whole lot of input other than to say, oh, I like this one. I don't want it to go away. What's going on? So I mean, I have things to say, but why not now?
Okay.
Yeah.
John, do you have anything on number one? Okay, let's move to number two. Sarah, you want to start us off again?
Yeah, I kind of went into number, I sort of merged one and two. I want to add that it seems like future oriented, something else that we have happening here is we have an expanded population in general. We have quite a few more, a lot more apartment mixed use. And I think that will only increase. And I'd like for us to just keep that in mind, though that's not happening on the open space because our job on open space is to not be residential primary, for the most part. I I think that there's something, I think there's a there there about how, I don't know what it is, but I just think future oriented, we should, that that I would like to see that. And I expect we will, happening, you're nodding your heads, great, that's it.
You know, I don't, I didn't do an exhaustive review of all the policies, but I I think to the extent that there needs to be something about, you know, the open space being a valuable resources, resource to all. You know, an inclusiveness focus that includes open space as being one way that we would like to include, you know, people from all different backgrounds. I'd just like to see that reflected in the comp plan. If it already isn't, I could have missed it. Okay. Want to jump to three? Brady?
I mean, I think Dan, I'm pleased with Dan's response. And if he and the staff support this and feel like we're not going to lose anything, then. I have never understood what the hell OSO and OSDR are. And so that's a big help to me. So I support it.
I, for reasons, I've done a lot of research on OSO and OSDR in the past. So I think this is a great step towards simplifying it. And based on what you're describing, I actually think it gives us more resolution and different visibility with different layers on the map. So I I think this is a great change.
I just wanted to add too, I've been, I've been living in this community for a long time. And and I have always been confused about OSO and clearly so many people in in this community have as well. So I fully support this recommendation.
Yeah, acronyms mean very little to me, so I love, love this.
So. Yeah, I mean, I think that what you're talking about, Christopher, you're talking about either having an open space or rural lands designation on the land use map. And we haven't decided whether it's going to be an OS or an RL.
Both, actually.
It's going to be both?
Yeah, they'd be both. So we can distinguish between what is truly open space and charter purposes versus just rural lands character privately owned.
Okay. And could you have rural lands that are publicly owned or because of ownership, would that automatically be open space?
We, you know, we are still working through, I think, some of some of the nuance. I mean, I suppose there could be, there could be some potential for, you know, publicly owned rural lands. I could actually even think of, you know, if there were, happened to be some of the park land, actually, in the planning reserve, that might be a good example where a portion of that may be left to be more rural in character and natural in character. Where rural lands application could make sense. But yeah, well, I mean, we'll, this all still work in progress very much, but that's something we can be considering.
Yeah, I think maybe, you know, to continue to go with your, your theme of decoupling ownership from land use map designation. Really, you should think about the land for what value it brings. And you know, what's, what's your definition of rural? Like, is rural just, you know, sort of pastoral or, you know, open, beautiful, whatever, you know? Or does rural conote that it's agricultural, for example? And you may not want to zone it ag. I don't know, we already have an ag zoning district in the in the use table. So maybe you have a bunch of land that you look at it and you go, well, you know, that's farm. You should keep it zoned A. But you know, actually looking at the use and really getting away from the ownership, like who cares at this point? Whether it's, you know, privately owned or publicly owned open space or privately owned ag land that has a conservation district easement on it, for example. You know, I always felt like one of the useful features of the OSDR was that if you were looking at a project on a piece of land that was, say, zoned ag and you saw, oh, wow, let's look at the comp plan, land use designation, oh, it's OSDR. It would be a better look up what what conservation easement's on this property. But I mean, frankly, people who are looking to do something on a piece of land should look up, you know, a title report and see whether it's got a conservation easement on it. And so, you know, in some ways, I just think, you know, you almost don't even need the natural systems overlay. And overlays tend to be zoning, not not land use map. They're they're creatures of of a zoning ordinance, not a land use map in a comp plan. So I'm not even sure I'm comfortable with the notion of an overlay, you know. Could we come up with some other word for it, you know, that that doesn't connote that we're actually doing some zoning? Because that was one of the problems with OSO. I remember when we were permitting the the Olive project where the liquor mart used to be, you know, there's the farmer's ditch behind it. And it had one of those fat, you know, lines that were drawn on the vellum in 1981 that said OSO. And there were, you know, arguments about whether we should allow the area under the OSO to be calculated into the net lot acreage for purposes of calculating the number of development rights that were available for that property. And and so the the more we use language that sounds like zoning, the more it it oversteps the purpose of the the OSO tag, you know, which was really just take a look at this and see if there are any natural features we ought to be looking at. And so I would just caution to, you know, keep that in mind, you know, keep that terminology in mind as you you think about doing this. I I like the idea of getting rid of those designations. And you know, we're lucky in some respects to live in Colorado where the state law doesn't say you have to have zone districts that correspond to every comprehensive land use map designation. So you can just make it up, right? You can't do that in Nevada, for example, where I used to be a planner. You have to have conformity between land use map designations and zoning districts. So you can just say in the comp plan, I mean, this is, you know, open space and, you know, typical zone districts that that live inside of open space or public and ag and resident, you know, rural and residential and whatever. You don't have to conform them all, so you can also just get rid of it. I I don't know, I I just think, you know, I I hope this isn't too wishy washy, but I just like you to think about that as you you do this. The the main piece is just, I think it's great that you're considering doing it at all. And maybe as part of this, if you're going to do something, I don't want to call it an overlay, but you're going to have something to sort of replace and stand in for an OSO to help people in the various departments, especially OSMP and and Planning and Development Services. In project review. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna keep some sort of map, can you look at the map and and see, is that railroad line that goes through, you know, this strip of of ag land? Is it, do we need that on the map anymore at all? You know, can you just take it off? I mean, do you have time to do a fine tooth comb analysis on this? Or are we just gonna keep, you know, these lines on our maps forever just because somebody drew them in 1981?
Yeah, we, we actually had a meeting this morning with Josh and and others from the OSMP staff and our GIS teams on both the OSMP and the PNDS side. And so we, to answer your question, yes, we're going to do a lot of cleanup and we're going to try to remove all of those strange artifacts and slivers and, you know, mapping errors and do that administratively. And then there will also be some, some potential changes that I think the team is going to want to bring forward for your review as part of that. But there also will just be some limitations on time overall. So I don't know if we'll be able to achieve a a complete overhaul of the OSO layer, but certainly a lot of those kind of outlier, low hanging fruit, we're going to be able to clean up as part of the process.
Yeah, maybe instead of calling it an overlay, just a layer, it's just a map layer in that, you know, when you're, I mean, you just said it, you know? Okay, that's, let me see if I have anything else, but that's great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead while I look.
I want to circle back on my comment about acronyms. I actually think this is important. I I feel that our comprehensive plan should be something that everyday people can read and understand. And also something that people who come and volunteer to join these boards or are elected for our commissions and city council should be able to easily understand what it means. My background is in in marketing and PR, so I'm always playing with words. And I love, you know, Harmon's playing with words in a very specific way that I appreciate and can't even totally. I mean, kudos to you and your entire, your, all of your past and your experience. But there is a way, because what ends up happening as this gets implemented is that people really are looking at this comprehensive plan and trying to understand what we're doing as a city. If they have a concern, if they're engaged citizens, really, I've had engaged citizens come to me and say, I'm reading this comprehensive plan and I see this word or I don't see this word and I know what this means or I don't know what this means. I did, the staff took on an entire half a day to help train me on the comprehensive plan. I have it sitting on my living room table. It's it's like a coffee book table in the house. And I think that it is our obligation to make sure that this is something that's accessible to the citizenry and that we kind of to Brady's point earlier about the budget, how it's a fine line between ensuring that we're covering all of our bases and that we are being, that we're ourselves being comprehensive in our process, that we don't alienate people in the process, that it that it doesn't become something that's like so unreachable or untouchable. So I would just note that I still, like, two years into this board, I do not know what OSO and OSDR mean. And I would love to see words like open space or natural systems on a map. It would really not just help everyday people, but also help us here. Thank you.
Guys, anything else? Okay, so I I just had one more comment, which is it's sometimes a little frustrating when when you look at the chapter four land use map descriptions to to see that there are no zone districts that are that correspond. And I think it could actually be useful, you know, if you worked with current planning, you sit down with Charles and just said, hey, you know, this could be sort of an including but not limited to. It doesn't have to be perfect, but when we have a, you know, we have four mixed use comp plan land use map designations. Maybe we're going to go to two or three, but if, oh, we're going to go to one, okay. But you know, there there are a bunch of MU, you know, districts. And so maybe you just, in the zone districts, so maybe you just name them. But you know, for example, for somebody who wants to know, if I'm in low density residential, very low density residential, medium density residential, you know, what are the the zone districts that are associated with those land use map designations? And and it always frustrates me that when you look at the comp plan, it doesn't say. So you know, that's not my open space hat talking. I'm not talking from underneath my open space hat there, but that's just a, do you have any, any response to that? Is there a reason why we don't have that or are you thinking of putting that in?
Well, if we do that, we'll have to get rid of our super secret crosswalk table that we keep locked up in the Planning and Development Services Department. Tells us which zone districts apply to the land use.
So there is something that they never shared with me.
There, we, well, what I, what I can say is that right now, it's almost, it's almost a one for one. There, we, well, what I can say is that, right now, it's almost, it's almost a one-for-one because there are so many land use designations and and we also have a lot of different zone districts. And so there is almost a one-to-one correlation right now. There will be more discretion, I would say, if we continue to proceed down this road and the twenty-six designations goes to thirteen and those designations are more broad, then there will be more, there will be more options, there will be more choices. And so there could be a need to provide some greater clarity around that. The only thing that I do get a little bit concerned about potentially is just that if we introduce too much detail and too much operational detail in the comprehensive plan, that if we ever happen to revise a zone district or change a name, we got to go back and we have to amend the comp plan, which is a whole process, right, and involves two or possibly four adopting bodies making a decision on that. So it's, it's a good, it's a good comment. Certainly, we'll look to try to strike a balance there. But, you know, as we move forward, yes, there'll need to be some additional coordination with our with our development review teams as to how to interpret the comprehensive plan going forward.
So two responses, I think, A, the including but not limited language gets you off of that, right? And then the other one is, I think it's just two-body review, right? It's just planning board and city council.
Within the city, correct, yeah.
Right, okay. All right. Anything else? Did we give you the feedback you were looking for or do you have anything else?
No, that was great. And I know I think we took up a little extra time. And so I would just appreciate all that effort and all the all the feedback you've received.
Well, I know that.
Provided to us. Thank you.
The kind of roadshow that you you have been on and are still going to be on for a while now, looking at your timeline. And we appreciate your time, too.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Dan, thank you.
Thanks, KJ. Thanks, Josh. All right, we're gonna, do a question?
Okay, I don't think we properly welcomed your new trainer.
Welcome, Josh, to Casey's team. Casey's very excited.
Yes, thank you, everyone. It's exciting to be here. It's a pleasure to meet all of you.
Josh Nabel, nice to meet you. Thank you.
All right, you want to keep, keep moving? Okay. Keep moving. All right, we got moving into our second topic tonight. And that Jeff's going to kick us off with a brief introduction of our preliminary data exploration with seven C and be supported with a presentation. Might note that Jeff's going to probably explain that we'll use this opportunity to kind of merge a little bit B and C on your agenda. So because the topics are so related, we'll have breaking points on each, but Jeff can explain a little bit about maybe what we're thinking of walking through this.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, Dan. Jeff Haley, Deputy Director for Visitor Experience and Infrastructure. And, yeah, we're excited to present a couple items primarily from our Human Dimensions team related to data. And so the first item certainly is related to the Citywide Strategy seven C that you heard a lot of the residents, community members talk about during public comment. The second item is our Trailhead utilization data. So as you can imagine, they're both pretty interrelated, but at the same time somewhat distinctly different. So as Dan teed up, we would like to somewhat combine them. I think we've allocated about an hour total for these two items. So I think each presentation's about fifteen minutes. So that would allow thirty minutes of presentation and about thirty minutes of discussion. We'll, we'll start with the focus on seven C. And I just want to kind of, one, speak to a little bit of the public comment this evening. And then also just to kind of tee up for the board, you probably remember we were here back in February, as was discussed earlier. Since that time, just like we presented in February, we've been hard at work gathering data, analyzing data, synthesizing data, really looking at the picture of what seven C, this multimodal component, what do we know about that? You know, and just like any process, any project, you want to start with a firm understanding of the of the problem or the challenge or the situation. So that's exactly what we've been up to. And so we've got some great work we want to present this evening. And that Trailhead utilization ties right into that. That's where people are accessing our lands, accessing the system, and so that supplements that as well. This, this project is a little slower in its in its timeline than what we anticipated. If you go back in February, look at the memo, we laid out some thoughts and ideas about the process. I think Dan referenced even last meeting. Because Josh is new, we had some staffing transition and that sort of thing. And so we do have new staff members joining the team. And so a little bit of a timeline that we're looking at, a revised timeline, basically. And we're sensitive to that and aware of that. But we do want to thank the community for showing up this evening, sharing their thoughts and ideas. This is an important project, the Citywide Strategy seven C specifically. It's about the access, multimodal access, so all access types. So I'll turn it over first to Dion, who's our Human Dimensions Manager. And then Anna Reed will also follow up after that with another presentation. The last thing I'll mention, our, our hope is between the presentations, and this is kind of for the board to consider. We like to start with the first seven C presentation about the data, and then the board can ask clarifying questions. You know, if there's something that you want to go back to a slide or reference. But then what we'd like to do is then dive right into the Trailhead presentation. And then at the end, support all the discussion and question if that works, just to kind of keep it moving. But, so anyway, at this point, Dion is actually online and should be joining us soon.
She's on, the only way to see her in here, though, is if you pull down your presentation. You'll be able to hear her, but maybe whatever you think is.
Hello?
There she is.
I didn't realize you wouldn't be able to see me, but you can hear me, okay?
We can see you in a little window, so you're not just a disembodied voice.
All right, isn't that the world of today, cyber, cyber avatars? All right, thanks, everyone, for sticking around and happy to be here. Thanks for the intro, and we're going to talk a little bit about our preliminary data exploration in support of item seven C next. Tonight, I'll run really briefly through introduction, methods, a few highlights, some applications and next steps. And then, as Jeff just mentioned, we'll wrap up with discussion and questions. Next. Just wanted to place the Human Dimensions team within the org chart, as we don't come here very often, maybe less familiar with us. We are nested within the Visitor Experience and Infrastructure Service area under Jeff and then under Recreation and Cultural Stewardship led by Francis, who is up with Anna to answer questions tonight. We currently have seventeen members, including myself, three analysts and three field technicians. Next. So within the general item seven C project process, we're currently in the assess what we know phase. And for the past few months, we've been working on conducting a preliminary data exploration and assessment using our own internal data on visitors, visitation levels and trailhead infrastructure utilization. Going forward and as the project develops, we plan to integrate other data as needed and provide additional support as the scope and goals of the planning project get refined. Next. So just a little bit about our methods. Next, please. We developed these eight initial specific geographic, or we developed eight initial specific geographic areas for analysis during twenty twenty-four. And for this data exploration, we added in Flagstaff and Shanahan. We did this to provide some structure for data mining and analysis within defined spatial boundaries because we have hundreds of data collection locations across the system. And just for example, seven C itself includes over two hundred, two hundred and twenty-two data collection locations. These boundaries provide a way for us to pull data and share results in a way that everyone can understand and where that is on the ground. We do plan to add more sub-areas in the future, and as always, boundaries could change depending on what is needed. So if you want to please take a few seconds to look at these polygons when I refer to these areas by name going forward. It does include all the trailheads and access points within that area. Anna, if you could click, please, we're going to highlight Marshall Mesa. So as in the Marshall Mesa analysis area includes the south sixty-six access point, Marshall Mesa Trailhead, as well as the old Marshall Mesa access point. Next. So our primary data sources you may be familiar with from last year, a couple of them. The twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three Public Opinion Visitor Experience Survey, as we refer to POVs. And then those same, those same years, we had our visitation estimate. And then in twenty twenty-four, we had our bike rack and trailhead parking lot utilization studies. And taken together, these data sources provide a way for us to holistically understand some of those relationships between visitor demographics, transportation choices, trailhead infrastructure use and visitation levels to inform and support discussions for item seven C and next steps. Next. So fun fact, I tried to make this look like a bike spoke wheel, bike spokes and wheel. You might remember a version of this graphic from your February twenty-five memo on item seven C. These were the types of data that we explored for this initial phase of this project. And we looked at things such as how visitors got to open space, how old they are, what activities they were doing and where they live. Next. So we did last share highlights from POVs and the visitation estimate with you in November of last year. And primarily, what's new for tonight is focusing on a few additional overall highlights as well as some spatial and visitor subsets. And then what's really new for tonight is organizing all of that data by the seven C goals that were shared with you in the February memo. And these were to reduce visitor emissions, increase equitable access options and expand safe multimodal access options. And highlights from that fourth goal that you see there, parking congestion, will be covered by Anna in the next presentation. Next. So getting into the, some of the highlights, the fun stuff, we'll start with reducing visitor emissions. Next. To reduce visitor emissions, it's always helpful to know where people live and how they're, how they're getting to the system. And across the study area, fifty-nine percent of visitors arrive by vehicle. And you can see this varies there in the red box residency, by residency with forty-four percent of city residents, sixty-six percent of county residents and eighty-five percent of those outside the county arriving by vehicle. In the future, we will have additional POVs results, looking at a little bit more of those trip details such as where people came from directly before they got to OSMP, how far they traveled to get to OSMP and where they plan to go next. And we hope those things support any sort of future discussions surrounding potential interventions. Next. So one way to consider reducing visitor emissions is to think about the total number and share of vehicle arrivals and how far people are typically traveling when they're coming to OSMP. And when we look at the, the total vehicle arrivals and miles, we see in-county visitors have a much greater total volume, but shorter trips on average. While out-of-county visitors have fewer total vehicle arrivals, but overall, they're representing a greater share of the vehicle arrivals compared to their share of the visitor population. And they also typically have longer trips to get to OSMP. Next. Another way to think about it is understanding access choices and access to alternatives within in-county and out-of-county visitors. Here we can see in-county visitors are pretty close to split down, right down the middle, almost, on vehicle and human power arrivals. Whereas out-of-county visitors are much more likely to arrive by vehicle than by their own volition. In-county visitors are also more likely to have access to existing alternatives or future alternatives such as bike and pedestrian networks or city transit or micro-mobility options. And potential emission reduction levers could be tailored to these varied travel distance with in-county visitors encouraged to arrive by walking or biking, riding the bus or choosing somewhere closer to home. And out-of-county visitors, we could look at carpooling with others or getting people to integrate their trip to OSMP with places they're already traveling. Next. So just a reminder, the, the average visitor vehicle arrival was fifty-nine percent across the entire study area and including all visitors. This is variable, of course, and we know that some areas have a higher percentage of vehicle arrivals such as Doughty Draw, Flagstaff and Teller Farms. And then we also have some visitor groups that tend to drive more people such as hikers and climbers, people aged twenty-nine years old or younger, and people that visit during the midday or PM hours. And when considering the total number versus share of vehicle arrivals, Chautauqua, Flagstaff and Sidney's come out at the top, and you can see the numbers there with Chautauqua at the tippity-top with over a quarter million vehicle arrivals annually. Next. So our next goal that I'll go through is increasing equitable access options. We want to be able to support access for everyone, including visitors of all income levels, races and abilities and not have unintended impacts on some visitors due to implementing other goals. And we know that equity is a complex and deep subject with a long, long and storied history and a lot of nuance. Tonight, we're going to focus on just a few demographics and how they vary across the system. And I do want to acknowledge this is just such a tiny piece of equity discussions, but also highlight that race is a primary component to consider in equity discussions with both our City Boulder Equity Plan guiding city staff to collect relevant data to understand and track needs and impacts as well as our internal OSMP Equity Action Plan, which contains several goals and actions that direct staff to consider equity in programs and projects. Next. So during POVs, we, oops, sorry, I went to the wrong one on my end. Starting with race, to work on increasing equitable access options, it's good to know where things stand now. And for race across the entire study area, ninety percent of visitors identified as white only. But this very spatially is shown here, it's ordered from top to bottom, least to most racially diverse. You can see the Boulder Valley Ranch, Sidney's and Teller Farms areas are the least racially diverse. And the Marshall Mesa, Flagstaff and Chautauqua areas are the most racially diverse, outlined in blue there at the bottom. And we do have a caveat for this one and the next one. The sample sizes for each area as a whole are very statistically sound. When you get down into the sub-areas as well as, or individual areas as well as individual race categories, some of the values can get really small and could, the percentages could fluctuate based upon how people self-identify. Next. So during POVs, we also have people if they identified as of Hispanic Latino or Spanish origin. And across the study area, seven percent of people responded in this way. This also varies spatially, as you can see in this table ordered, again, from least to most. The same three sub-areas that were the most racially diverse, and that was Marshall Mesa, Flagstaff and Chautauqua also had the most respondents that identified as of Hispanic Latino or Spanish origin. And areas with the least people that identified in this way were Wonderland Lake, Boulder Valley Ranch and Gun Barrel. Next. So on to income ranges across the entire study area. The median is somewhere between a hundred thousand and a hundred and forty-nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars annually. That's at the household level. And those making two hundred thousand dollars or more, which were twenty-eight percent of our sample, were almost double of those making less than fifty thousand dollars per year, that least category, and that was at fifteen percent. Areas with the least people in that less than fifty thousand area were Gun Barrel, Shanahan and Doughty Draw. And areas with the most were Chautauqua, Teller Farms and Flagstaff. So a key takeaway to consider when you're looking at race along with Hispanic Latino or Spanish origin and income ranges collectively suggests that historically underrepresented groups are more likely to visit destination areas like Flagstaff and Chautauqua. So it's important to keep these areas accessible and welcoming. Next. Then when we look at income and transportation mode together, you can see that red arrow showing as income goes up, vehicle arrival goes down. And we don't really know, because we haven't looked into this per se. But looking at past, past survey data and just what's out there in published literature, this may be influenced by things such as available time, residency, proximity to open space, access options available to people, and then simply the distribution of OSMP lands and where they are in relation to different income range people and where they live. Next. So visitors with lower incomes and those that identified as non-white only or were twenty-nine years old or or were 29 years old or younger tend to drive more overall and are the least multimodal, and this was most pronounced in the Wonderland, Shanahan, Gun Barrel, and Boulder Valley areas. And going back to those reasonings, this may reflect longer travel distances, less available time, or less access to walking or biking routes for these specific visitor groups. Next. On the other end of the spectrum, we have Shandelein, Shanahan, Wonderland Lake, and Gun Barrel areas that had some of the most multimodal, multimodal visitors were visitors with higher annual household income, white race, white. Sorry. It's a tongue twister. White-only race or being 60 years old or older were more likely to arrive via human power. And this may reflect that proximity, schedule flexibility, potentially people in retirement, or better access to walking or biking groups, biking routes for these visitor subgroups. Next. So the last one we'll share about is expanded and safer multimodal access options. Next. We do see the highest vehicle arrival rates in areas with limited bike and pedestrian access, such as Doughty Draw and Flagstaff. Next. And then we have moderate vehicle use in areas such as Chautauqua and Sunitas, where there's a little bit more connectivity in streets and bike lanes, but not necessarily the best. And next. And then the least vehicle use in some of these neighborhood adjacent areas with more connected streets and bike lanes or paths connecting right into open space trail network, trail networks, such as in Gun Barrel and Wonderland Lake areas. Next. So during POVs, we asked people what characteristics of the particular place they were at that day contributed to a quality experience. And for most everyone, beauty, scenery, and views rose to the top, but things such as being close to home, location, and proximity also stood out, as you can see in this word cloud. We learned through this that convenience is pretty important. Many people appreciate being able to walk, run, or bike to trails. Next. So ending with some management applications and next steps. Next. The master plan and visitor master plan both call out encouraging multimodal access and providing facilities and services that would support visitors arriving by means other than a personal vehicle. And this review helps show where this is already occurring and where improvements or investments could further these plan initiatives. Next. So this analysis provides a data-driven approach to support management needs, such as identifying priority locations for access improvements or further study for supporting broader city goals, such as climate action and community equity, and for developing targeted strategies to encourage alternative transportation. Next. And in addition to supporting long-term management, these data will be used to justify funding and inform future infrastructure investments. Could be used to guide messaging and behavior change efforts and provide a foundation for data-informed decisions where targeted actions will yield the most benefits, such as implementing key trail connections that support multimodal access. Next. We know that internal data is not going to be sufficient for the process down the road. So to boost multimodal and equitable access, we need to consider other factors, such as traffic, transport mode, connectivity, safe ways to access where people want to go. And some of these factors are out of OSMP scope or jurisdiction, so we plan to work with our city and county colleagues to integrate available data. We also need to understand how our actions may or may not be impacted based on those other aspects. Because no matter how many parking spaces there are, or bike racks we provide, there may be other factors that play that impact visitor choices and decisions. And the applications and further exploration of this data will be iterative as the scope and goals of the planning process get refined. Next. So looking into the future, a little bit of the unknown, as the project continues, we move into data-informed discussions and developing alternatives, and we hope our work will support these future, excuse me, these future phases and understanding how alternatives that are developed may influence visitor choices. And with that, next please. Hopefully I was right on about 15 minutes.
I think you were. Thank you. So any clarifying questions from the board? Okay, you must have done a great job. We have none.
Woo! Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'll just get set up here. All right. So hi, everyone. My name is Anna Reed. I'm a Human Mentioned Senior Analyst on the team, and this is my first time meeting most of you, so hello, and I'm very happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So as Jeff mentioned, this is kind of a complimentary effort, maybe kind of foreshadowing some of this. We collected this data last year. It's the first time we collected data on bike parking and picnic table use, and then this was a kind of second study iteration for getting vehicle parking at our trailheads. So a little bit of an overview of what we'll talk about. I'll just briefly go over data collection, results from the three different topic areas, vehicle parking, bike parking, and picnic table use. I'll cover some key takeaways, and then we'll have questions at the time, at the end for both 7C and the study. So first, why are we doing this? How people arrive to the trailhead is a big part of their overall experience. A vehicle congestion was brought up back in the 2005 visitor master plan, and again in the 2019 master plan, with encouraged multimodal access to trailheads highlighted as a specific strategy in addition to supporting many others listed here. And one of the best ways to know if we're supporting these strategies is to collect data. So we did a study in 2019, 2020, which covered 34 trailheads. In 2024, we included a few access points, which brought us up to 50 locations. Access points being the designated locations the public can access trails, but OSMP does not manage the parking. We previously did data collection June to March, and this time did a more collection June to November. And we previously just measured vehicle parking, and this time added in bike parking and picnic table use, as we have not systematically measured those before. We visited each site about 42 times, and these were evenly distributed between weekdays and weekends and times of day. So jumping right into results, we have some trend data for vehicle parking specifically. If we're comparing apples to apples, the average number of vehicles inside the formal trailhead lots is about the same between the two studies. The overall average went from 338 vehicles to 336. This new 2024 study gave us a pulse check since 2019 was the first time we collected these parking data, and we see that there is consistency. That doesn't mean there aren't issues. Congested areas are still congested, and lower areas still get lower use. And these averages don't capture spillover parking that we know occurs. So we took a closer look at spillover at some sites this time. Looking at Chautauqua as an example, we only included parking in front of the Ranger Cottage Lot, which is the green box there. Even though people park along the green on baseline and in the neighborhood to access the trails, we just had to put some boundaries on data collection to make it feasible. The graph below, if you can see that, shows the number of vehicles parked for each observation, and the dash lines show 100% and 85% capacity for the Ranger Cottage Lot. We can see it's pretty frequently at 100% capacity, and we know vehicles are also parking in surrounding areas during these times. We did incorporate some spillover data at a few other locations, such as Dry Creek, as in this photo. The green box shows the formal trailhead where we intended for visitors to park, and the blue boxes show spillover, so people parking along this private drive, which is causing issues like erosion, and then even unsafely along baseline, which was not our initial intent at this trailhead. So this graph shows the number of vehicles parked inside the formal lot that we originally intended at Dry Creek with the formal lot capacity lines. And then this graph incorporates all vehicles parked in the area, and we can see the vehicles parked outside of the formal lot in dark blue on the top. This tells a bit of a different story, and we can see there's sometimes just as many vehicles parked outside of the lot as inside. We were only able to collect this extra data at a few locations where it was feasible, and it's something that could be worth focusing on in the future. And Dry Creek specifically is planned for a trailhead redesign that will accommodate more parking. So to cover some of the applications from this, the department is doing trailhead improvements at many locations, including Dry Creek, as was just mentioned, Marshall Mesa, Sahill Ponds, and Chapman Drive are actively being constructed. Flatiron's Vista is on the docket in the new, in the near future, as well as a few others. We can also measure the impact of expanded multimodal access. So building on the 7C initiative, we can see if any actions do in fact reduce congestion. And we, we may have opportunities to modify use, so maybe highlighting lower-use trailheads that connect to the same trail systems or similar experiences, or make sure people are aware of less busy days or times they could potentially visit. That also feeds into pre-arrival trip information, so providing information to manage expectations and help people come up with a backup plan if trailhead parking is full. An application example of that is trailhead cameras. This photo here shows Greenbelt Plateau, which is a lower-use trailhead that provides an option for a place to go if nearby trail, trailheads are full, such as Flatiron's Vista, which connects to the same trail system across 93. So visitors can potentially go online to see parking availability beforehand and maybe decide to park here instead. So looking ahead, now that we have some trend data, we can focus on more targeted monitoring. This can help us assess impacts of trailhead redesigns and help inform what congestion management strategies may be most effective. We could also focus on demand and spillover, since we just scratched the surface of that. And this in particular is great to do in collaboration with other departments, such as Transportation and Community Vitality, who do systematic trafficking and parking counts on public streets within city limits. We could also focus on access points where people can access trails, but we don't have OSMP-managed parking, and include new trails such as North Sky Trail and Vesper, so we can help assess and manage parking impacts. So that was everything for vehicle parking. Moving on to bikes. We did observations of bike rack use, as well as bikes parked in an area but not necessarily attached to a rack. And bike racks are valuable. Their use can reduce congestion and emissions, support an active outdoor lifestyle, support multimodal access, lay the groundwork for future shifts in transportation, and make trailheads more welcoming and accessible. And we do have a lot of them. This map shows all the locations included in the study that had them, and even more have been installed since then. That said, they didn't have a ton of use, at least compared to vehicles. We found overall low average bike occupancy, the map on the left here. And the map on the right shows average percent occupancy for vehicles. This is good to know, but we also recognize maybe not very helpful. So instead of occupancy, we looked at the percent of the 42 observations where we saw at least one bike present. And now we can kind of see more use in areas with higher vehicle congestion. This could suggest people may be more likely to bike if they know parking will be difficult, particularly locations that are close to town and easier to get to. So this can help us highlight some opportunity areas. And because we now have some data by time of day and day type, like weekday and weekends, we can get a better understanding of peak use if we do any future monitoring. And the trailheads team has been really busy. They're actively installing or updating bike racks at 18 to 20 locations largely around these areas. And we do have some ideas for why many racks did not see a lot of use. We know from survey data that not many people bike to hike. The top graph here shows how hikers arrive to the trail, and we can see that not very many of them biked. The bottom graph shows how bikers arrive to the trail, and we can see people who are biking on the trail are much more likely to bike to the trail access, which makes sense, and ought to load their bike into a car or anything. We also learned that the trail needs to be easily accessible. This map shows where people are biking to bike in blue, so much of the system. This suggests people prefer to bike to the access point if they are able to, which also makes sense. The orange shows where they are driving to bike. And the southern area of the system is further from town, which could be a factor, and also lacks some multimodal pathways to get to these areas safely, as we heard about earlier as well. We can also gain some insights from where we saw peak bike parking. One example of this was at Chautauqua, which had this baseline level of use, and then this peak, which happened to be during the Flatiron Sounds Music Festival. So even if people aren't biking to hike, they may be willing to bike for events like this. This isn't necessarily an OSMP function, but again, it supports multimodal access goals and something that could be worth supporting. Similarly, Teller Farms South largely didn't have any bikes on the bike racks, but we did capture this biking event with a bunch of bikes in the area. So we could consider accommodating demand for large biking groups where it makes sense and help make sure there is safe access to get there. The new Marshall Mesa Trailhead could be a great example of this with a gathering area and a bike fix-it station at the trailhead. We also learned a bit about best practices and standards for bike rack installations. This example shows three bike racks all installed fairly close together in the Sunitas area. The easternmost racks are the new standard with the inverted U, highly visible and close to town where most people are likely coming from. These racks saw the highest amount of use with at least one bike present on about half of observations. The other two racks were further west, more hidden, harder to safely get to, and saw less use. And finally, there are, of course, other access modes, such as Lime scooters, B-cycle, mopeds, and motorcycles. We now have some data on where we saw these, and are also looking into multimodal access options with these as well. All right. So finally, picnic tables. Picnic tables are also very valuable and provide important areas to sit, rest, and gather. They're used for events such as weddings. They're a low-barrier way to enjoy open space if people want to be outside, but not necessarily on the trail. They encourage use on a durable surface. For example, people are hanging out waiting for other members of their group, and they're a low-cost way to make trailheads more welcoming and accessible, in particular for families, older adults, people with limited mobility, but also anyone who just wants to use them. These also saw lower average use on the daily level, but were observed used at nearly every location at least once out of the 42 observations. This map, like bike racks, shows the percent of observations we saw them in use, and we did notice some patterns with more use concentrated at scenic locations, such as Flagstaff area, areas close to town, such as the People's Crossing, busier locations like Centennial and South Mesa, could be people gathering before or after a hike, and locations near water, which also has overlap with the scenic areas. So looking ahead, this was the first time we collected data on picnic table use, and now that we have a baseline, we'll have the opportunity to monitor trends over time if we feel that there's the need in the future. We also identified characteristics of higher priority locations for future installs, and we can always gain some additional insight from survey data to help identify priorities. Right? So some key takeaways overall. For vehicle parking, future monitoring should focus on spillover and new trail locations, such as North Sky and Vesper, as well as access points. For bikes, we should prioritize high-vehicle congestion locations for bike racks and ensure they are highly visible. And we should also focus on multimodal connections for safe access. For picnic tables, we should prioritize locations with scenery, large groups, and nearby water access. And across all of these variables, we can monitor and track change, so we know what's working and what's not. I just wanted to give a quick plug for the interactive report that's posted on our website, so everyone can kind of dive in and explore some of the data on their own. And then give a thank you to Shay, Madison, and Rachel, who did all of the data collection last year, and then open it up for questions.
Thanks a lot, and appreciate that. Do we want to follow the rubric? Jeff can go clarifying questions on this matter first, and then we'll start discussing. Okay. Any clarifying questions on the second half of the presentation? Yeah, Sarah.
Can you help me understand the connection between the picnic tables, walking, and biking?
Can you help me understand the connection between the picnic tables, walking and biking? I just totally lost the plot there. I got confused.
Why we did all of them?
Yeah, how, wh- why is that included in this presentation and how is it related to walking, biking, driving?
Yeah, they, that's a good question. They are all distinct things. Um, we just. Took the opportunity to, to measure bike racks and picnic tables because we have not measured those before. Um, and so for going to the trailheads to, you know, look at vehicles and we, we know that like, you know, biking's a, a big topic too. And so we wanted to take the opportunity to measure them and it kind of made sense to combine them.
And you're measuring the use of them or the, okay.
Yeah, kind of assessing demand for different features of trailheads.
Demands, got it. Okay, okay, that makes sense. I actually had a clarifying question from the previous that I just realized I should have asked. Did you have a thing there that people were walking from the county? Like, and then I was like, how, why, where are they walking from? Are they walking miles and miles and miles to get to the trails? Or are they getting off of a bus? Or is that what, did I hear that you're not sure? Um, can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, I could look up those individual records. I don't have that at the top of mind, but. Since the majority of our property is in the county, it makes sense that some people, you know, adjacent could walk right over.
Okay, so those are people walking to adjacent areas within the county that are still designated Boulder City Open Space.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, I was wondering if the um, bike rack utilization data that you have now. Sort of changes the priority that you might have originally had in your mind, like now that you have this data. I, I know that Cragmore needs one, needs a bike rack, like, oh, you know, like really needs several, but. Um, but you know, when you originally thought of your, the um, your plans to install bike racks and at different trailheads and access points. Do you now have a different sense for what that order ought to be?
Yeah, we um. A lot of the installs were happening while we were doing this study, but we had conversation as we were going. So we looked at preliminary data too, to see where it looked like there was demand. Um, so especially where we saw bikes attached to a post or a tree or, or something that suggests demand there. Um, so that was shared with the trailheads team to help prioritize. Um, and then I think being able to look at the data a little more, I think we can kind of hone in on some priorities. And the trailheads team is already doing a great job, um, just focusing on areas that are busier as a whole. Which I think people are more likely to, to bike if they know that parking is, is more of a challenge and they're able to. Um, so those are uh, priority locations right now.
Was there any surprises where that you, you like, oh, we're, we had this in the plan and then we're like, oh, cross that one off?
I don't know if any were necessarily crossed off because they're, I don't know how much each. But they're a relatively low cost thing and they're kind of a, a first step too. Um, so even if they're, we don't necessarily have any good trail connections there yet. It's kind of, they're in a low cost way to kind of do that preliminary step.
Yeah, Anna answered it really well. I would just add one of the interesting things that we've seen. Is in my, in our minds, and again, back to this whole situation. The team, Sarah, to your question, the team has been doing this work and analysis last year and even before seven C really became a priority. So this is kind of that separate piece of, we've been wanting to just look at, we measure a lot of things, visitors, how they arrive, like all the stuff you've heard tonight. This piece that Anna just referenced was a new data set that we had not yet really collected. And we try to base everything on data, you know, are these things being used? Is it good to have? And so that's kind of why it's kind of picnic table, what are we doing? You know, are we going to start measuring bathrooms or what? Dog poo, you know, what's going on? So that's kind of the piece there. It's been interesting, Michelle, because um. We see bike racks as this another, another mode of travel or another access arrival mode. And so some places we've been installing racks or considering. Some of the neighbors or other folks around the area are saying, wait, you know, we don't necessarily want to increase people coming here. Um, it's busy enough. Um, why are you now putting racks? You're really formalizing this stuff and you're making it. You know, and we're saying, well, we're, we're trying to, just like we presented, understand if we shift. Allow people to have a safer bike parking experience. Might they use a bike instead of a car or other means? So that's been a surprise and interest, it's just again, understanding our visitors, understanding our neighbors. And then the other piece too, like um, the reference to Centennial Trailhead. We have racks, a lot of old style racks, you know, they're covered in uh, grass or behind a shaded. Where we see they're really the new standard and it's very visible, open, people are more likely to see them, use them. I mean, that, that seemed like, you know, yeah, intuitive, uh, but that even more so. Kind of like, yeah, let's install them to this new standard, uh, with the pad and everything else that people are accustomed to throughout the community, but anyway.
So neighbors are complaining that bike racks are getting installed?
Uh, I don't want to say complaining, but curious. Um, they're, so they're.
V- vehemently curious?
Yeah, just uh, you know, kind of like, hey, we haven't had racks here before. And we have a lot of high visitation, high use in these areas. And these are access points. These are areas that are not formal trailheads. It's kind of that neighborhood access. And some neighbors, others might feel there's a, a lot of visitation. And the concern that maybe adding racks is just increasing that. And so what we're saying is no, we're trying to maybe reduce the vehicle arrival mode by adding a rack. So yeah, i- it's not like we don't want them, we don't, but just like, help us understand the logic here. Are you just encouraging more people to come here that maybe aren't intended to, so, yeah.
Jeff, i- is there a um, a particular design that we are buying at this point? Throughout the system so that it'll encourage that, that, you know, you talked about how noticing, people notice the new ones. More, do we have a, a particular design that's emblematic of the system?
Yeah, exactly. And it's the inverted U that Anna showed on that one slide. Um, and you'll see those throughout the city. In fact, they're in, it's kind of the city standard that we've adopted. Over the years with O S and P, we've had different, uh, you, you know, like if you go to Chautauqua, you see a lot of bizarre racks and, you know. Um, so the, the new inverted U is more of the city standard that we've adopted into our design guidelines. Again, just for that consistency, it's safe, easy to lock to, um, with the pad, so you're not. You don't have this muddy area where the bikes, you know, and, and so, yeah, city standard basically calls for that inverted U rack.
Have you thought about painting them like Forest Service brown? Well, to let them know it's an open space rack and not, not an urban rack.
Yeah, in fact, Francis and I are laughing. We, we met with some neighbors recently and that, that, again, that's some of the. The curiosity is like, um, you know, these look urban and these look, these aren't consistent with your open space.
I was only half joking with that question.
But, and, and uh, you know, the concrete and that sort of thing. So we're considering that and, and understanding how we might be able to do that more aesthetically and more consistent with the open space kind of theme. Of a more natural theme, so.
Awesome. Yeah. Any other clarifying questions while we're still on clarifying questions?
Oh, no, I'm ready for comment.
Okay, and Jeff, can you tell, tell, tell us again, I'm sorry, my memory is not, not here right now. Um, how did you want to direct or how did you want me to direct this uh, rest of this discussion now that we've asked our clarifying questions?
Yeah, at this point, it's just open conversation. I think what we were trying to do is just let both presentations. Be presented before we get into the board discussion and dialogue. So now you're free to do whatever you'd like, for sure.
Thanks Jeff. Thanks Sarah.
One quick, I'm not sure it came across really clearly, but. There were four goals nested under, like these big broad overarching goals that we focused the data exploration on for seven C. And um, Anna's piece of that, which was a standalone study that we did before. We, we planned to do before seven C even came onto our work plan. Is kind of that fourth goal, the parking congestion. So that's why we're presenting them together. They're interrelated. Everything can be interrelated with seven C right now in how broad it is. So that's just the context of how it all interplays, which might help the conversation.
Okay, great, appreciate that. Sarah, want to get us started?
Um, I actually think this is um, a very important issue and I'm glad that we're spending time and that. Uh, thank you so much for putting together all of this data. And I know that Michelle's going to have a lot of good things to say. This has been something you've been really champion, championing for a couple of years. I, I personally, um, I've lived in Boulder for twenty-five years. I've lived in South Boulder. I've lived in Central Boulder and I now live in North Boulder. Uh, when I was younger, in my early twenties, I spent three years without a car. Uh, and only biked everywhere and I more recently spent the past year and a half without a car. Um, well, I Uber, of course, so I, it's not like I'm never in a, in a vehicle. But uh, it's been a really fun social experiment for me and I'm learning a lot about the nuances of how the bike paths work. In town and also um, kind of this whole, the, the big picture. So um, I want to speak a little bit from my, anecdotally from my own personal experience and also hearing this data. I think I'm starting to get some clarity on this uh, conversation which we've been having um, ongoing. So, so first of all, there's this walking. Um, and I think that at the end of the day, we do want to relieve that congestion. However, what I see in the data is that people who are climbers, in other words, they're bringing a lot of gear with them. Uh, likely people who have children, uh, and or um, people who have dogs. Are needing to put all of that into their car, into their vehicle in order to get, even if they wanted to bike. Um, they, or, or they might bike if they were alone or in other circumstances. They're probably going to need to bring a vehicle. Um, so I'm just going to set that aside because I don't know how to solve for that. Then when I look at biking, um, I think that we have two, two things. We have sort of two branches of that tree. We have recreational biking and we've had an amazing show from the community here today. Asking very specifically for a connector that people have been asking for, for a long time. And I really hope that we will get that done, do what it takes, make that happen. Uh, I need to learn more. I probably, maybe I'm being naive, but I'm like, why isn't that happening? Can we just please make that happen? It seems like a no-brainer. Um, and similarly for recreation, for the young people living up in North Boulder, there's the gap between Wonderland Lake. And then how do we get, that, we, we have these little compartmentalized zones. And most of us want to go north to south in the city and we've done a great job. You know, we have the Boulder Creek, which takes us east to west and we have these other veins. Now we're building this big vein on Iris and et cetera. But we just don't have that north to south thing nailed down. And then especially when we get into further south, we're talking recreation. Uh, so that, but the other branch of that tree is the commuting. And I think the commuting where I've been having my most recent personal experience, that is the inner city, interdepartmental collaboration. We need parks and rec, we need transportation, um, we need to get everything, we need those roads improved so that you want to bike. Even just from Broadway West, we do not like going up Mapleton on your bike, even if you're willing to ride up the hill like I am. Also, we now have electric bikes, so the realities of commuting on a bike have changed profoundly. And will only continue to do more so if you go to Centennial Middle School and you look at the bike racks back there. They are all motorized electric bikes, except for my son's. He's still pedaling. Um, but those young people are going to grow up. A lot of them might stay here and go to CU. The students at CU have those electric motorized bikes. I think we have an enormous opportunity as a city. To really lean into that, especially as we start to zoning wise, build all of these apartments and we're attracting more young people and blah, 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 blah. I, I think that we've been sort of being funny about bike racks, uh, but Michelle's been being serious. I think we should take our bike racks seriously. I think we should prepare for more commuting, uh, and stage that. Uh, in tandem with much deeper, broader, wider city efforts. There's a lot of money that's going to have to be spent and we should as a city be doing that. And so then the question becomes, what can we do as open space to help lead the charge on the commuter traffic? So that those people that don't have their dogs and their kids and their climbing ropes would also, like me, want to go and bike up and park. And then go for my walk or my run on the trail. I, I don't have an answer to the parking congestion. I know that that was sort of the central theme here. Again, I, I think that we're, we want to be inclusive, we want to invite people in. Um, but I do see real opportunities in summary for recreation, specifically in South Boulder. More immediately and in the longer, but hopefully near term, just north to south. And then I think we can help um, drive the conversation. I know we're driving a lot of conversations right now. But let's do the same thing that I keep advocating for with fire resilience. I want to see that in this transportation and commuting. Culture that we can and should be leaning into and espousing as a city. So those are my comments.
Happy to go next, if you want to go in order. So uh, th- thank you for all that, Sarah. I, I, um, I'm aligned with that. You know, the, the thing I missed, there were like four pillars um, that we're going after. And the one I didn't really see us talk about or focus on was safety. Um, you know, there, there's three of the pillars that, you know, are longer term challenges and problems we need to solve. But safety is a problem that is, is here, it's now, it's very real and it's urgent. Um, and the last time we talked about this issue, we talked about what small things can we do? You know, that are totally within our control to, you know, make things safer for people to access the trails. Um, and I'm a little disappointed, we didn't, you know, see any ideas around that or we aren't talking about how to do that. So going forward, I would love to, to hear, you know, what ideas we have there, what are the next steps there? Um, you know, we heard from the community about one specific example. That sounds like low hanging fruit. Maybe there's complications there, but I would love to understand, you know, what those complications might be. Uh, to make something like that happen and what a process like that might look like. But, you know. I would love to see more of a focus on safety moving forward and see what small things we can do to improve that. Because that is an urgent issue. Thinking about how we can get people out of cars and encouraging them to use other modes, right? That's great. Let's collect data. Let's think about that. Let's, let's take time to do that, but safety is more urgent than that. So that's my take.
Oh, sure. I, I agree with what John just said, Will said. And I, I would just like specifically to hear the staff address. The, a, a reasonable timeline and process for what a lot of the people that showed up tonight spoke to. I, I think they deserve a, a, a clear answer, um, even if it's the, we don't know. But I, I just, I, I, I think there was a lot of people who made very compelling arguments. And it does seem very reasonable and I know, you know, some of us are still maybe a little bit scarred by the West TSA process. But it's time to move on and I think this community is ready for that particular connector. And yeah, I think they deserve a, a straight answer.
Thanks Brady. I think a lot of people are scarred by that process. And, and quite frankly, disheartened to get involved in the community again, unfortunately. But for, uh, thankful for those who did show up. Um, Sarah, I want to, uh, totally agreed with everything you said. Uh, the, the ironic thing, cause about what you said about getting north and south is that. And, and tying in recreation is that our passive recreation areas, our big passive recreation areas are north and south. We have west, but you can't, you can't bike it, uh, you know, um, Chautauqua anyway, but then, and, and we talked a lot about those issues. But you can't actually interconnect, uh, north is possible if you really understand it. Um, and, but going south, there's a, a, a major disconnect. And, and the two thousand five visitor master plan said, and this is twenty years old now, that we wanted to. Um, and I pulled up the exact language, but to interconnect our trails. And it's now twenty years later. Um, and then also, John, I agree with what you said is, is safety is a, is a big part of this. And, you know, what small things exist truly within our control. And um, the, the speakers today happen to talk about ones that are completely under open space management. Um, and, and don't involve a long study. Um, okay, and then one of our, I just, uh, you know, one of our speakers, her name was Christine. Um, you know, mentioned um, that she, and, and we, I just don't want us to forget. Um, that how we all felt around Magnus White dying. And um, this, this youth um, athlete. Um, and I don't want us to be like, okay, that was, you know. Uh, in the rearview mirror, we're all emotional about it. We did a, you know, a ride and we did a GoFundMe and. Um, and now we're going back along our bureaucracy to move through this process. And, and but let's have a sense of urgency. One more kid dies and that's on us, honestly. Because that, there are hundreds of kids who, or hundreds of trips that happen. Uh, um, and I know my, my kids did it when they're eight years old because they were in B J C. At the time where they, they, they biked on um, Marshall Road and crossed Highway one seventy. When I found out they did that afterward, I didn't know that they were going to do that. I was not happy. But you know, they were doing their best to get the kids from. But, you know, they were doing their best to get the kids from point A to point B without getting them in a car. And, and I just had to like, let it happen, you know, I was like, okay. And then I started to take them and I just, you know, really trained them how to be safe, but it doesn't make me any less anxious when they do it. And, and they're 13 years old now. And so, you know, she was very emotional about it and I, it made me feel emotional and like, come on, that happens one more time and that's really on us. You know, and the, the part where, in the, the wording of the strategic initiative 7C says identify and implement key trail connections and access improvements. I just don't want us to spend a year on identifying. We know, they all identified it for us already, you know, before we get to implementation, especially on things that we can control. We already know, I mean, we knew when you showed us the POVs data last fall, that 92% of the people who go to Doughty Draw Drive. But it's different when you look at Marshall Mesa because you can get through, get through, well, a lot of us do bike from South Boulder to get to Marshall Mesa. And, but that is not possible in Doughty Draw. And I do know that you were all planning on redoing another trailhead, the South Mesa Trailhead, right after you finished Marshall Mesa. And now I think that's been for permitting reasons and for access reasons that you decided to, to push that down the pipeline. And so I, I think we just, we, we know that that's a problem, that area is a problem, we, we've identified it, let's, let's implement a solution. The last point that I want to make is regarding the timeline. In February, you had your deliverables identified by quarter and, and the packet, it's, you get a year. It's listed as sometime in 2006, so where, where originally, 2026, originally we were going to have this, this background and data assessment in Q2 and we were going to have scenario development and analysis in Q3, which is, you know, I guess in 20 days would be into Q3, or no, that'd be Q4, we're into Q3 now. So we're already a quarter behind. And then we, in Q4, we're going to have draft preferred scenarios and implementation scenarios. In Q1, we're going to have a final plan and management approach. And, and now if you look at this, this chart and this timeline that you're showing us, it's like next steps and additional data. 2025 to 2026, okay, that's, that's really vague, 26. Capacity feasibility priority, 26. And then you get into the latter half of this timeline and it's TBD. And, and I just think that giving the community, especially those who have been scarred by participating in previous processes that went really, really badly, some sense of action, like do we have any hope in this? I mean, do we, this is something that we want, we're, we're showing up, we're, we're getting involved, is there any hope for us? And when, when you have a box that says a year and then the next level is TBD, it's like, wow, this, this TBD could be 20, 20, could be, my kids could be graduated from college by then. And, and so it's just, it's really hard to, to hold on any hope and that we aren't going to have another Magnus White on our hands.
Michelle, I've got a quick question for you if you don't mind. So a former member of this board called in and suggested that the existing off-open-space bike infrastructure was in fact a safe way to reach some of these trailheads. I don't know these trailheads as well as you do, could you comment on that?
Yeah, and I think she had said that there was a perfectly safe bike route. First of all, it's not a bike path, it's a street, if you've been on Marshall Road. So when you're, there's a, there's a bike path and then it ends and then you're, you're coming, you're going south. It, it completely ends and then you get onto Marshall Road and I don't know what the speed limit there is, but I, I want to think it's like-
Do you mean going to Doughty Draw?
Going to Marshall Mesa.
Oh, okay.
I'm starting there.
Because I, I think Doughty Draw is worse.
It's worse, yeah.
I mean, having to go down El Dorado Springs Road instead.
Right.
There's no room.
There's no room.
And it's four miles or three, it's a wa, it's a ways before you get to the trailhead from Broadway.
Yep, it is, I would never ride that, by the way, I would never, ever ride that.
Yeah.
But I think the, what she's saying that there's perfectly safe ways and if, there's, there's not a way actually for, if you're going straight to Doughty Draw, if you're going to Marshall Mesa, you're, you'd take that Marshall Road where I don't, I think the speed limit might be-
25.
But they're, but they're going really fast, right? Because it's kind of adjacent to 93. And then you need to cross Highway 170. And, and while the trailhead redesign is moving the, the, the access point or the driveway and there's, you know, like some painted crosswalks there now, it's still heavily unsafe. And I think in the December meeting, I had pulled up the transportation data, which is already available, by the way, and of like how many, how many accidents or crashes happen in that intersection and it's high, it's dangerous. And then art, you know, you're, you know, you're, and just know that your eight-year-old is making that crossing, it's like, it's very unnerving. But that's, that's how you would get to Marshall Mesa. And there are, and we know that the data shows us that a lot of people do do it because they'd want to, you know, do the right thing for the environment, they do want to exercise. But if they could go through that other path, they wouldn't be on the road and they'd still get there. Yeah, thank you for asking that question.
Did you finish up or?
I finished, yeah.
You're good? Okay. Any further? So, you know, I guess, you know, I, I think listening to what you're saying and also noticing some of the, the language that I saw on the slides, you know, it seemed like a lot of the older planning guidance had to do with using multimodal road options to get to trailheads. You know, getting people out of cars, getting people into buses, getting people to trailheads. And I think what you're, what, what I'm hearing is that, you know, there are certain areas, especially in South Boulder, where we're talking about just opening up trails to different modes so that, you know, we really shift the focus from some of the planning guidance that we had. And I think, you know, but if you look at 7C, it speaks directly to the kind of initiative that, that Michelle is championing. So maybe the, the city council guidance is at odds with some of the older planning documents that we have, that are guiding some of our discussions here at OSMP. And I, I think that, you know, it's not like the comprehensive plan where if you want to change, you know, provisions in the comp plan, you got to go get four bodies to approve it. And I just wonder if, you know, there, there's a prohibition in the West TSA for bikes on certain trails, is that something where we have to reopen and, and revisit the entire planning process and, you know, all the people with the PTSD or, you know, rolling around? You know, or is this something that we can handle with a targeted, you know, plan amendment, change the guidance in that plan, you know, just go surgically into the plan and say, well, you know, we, times have changed. And guess what? There's an entire public process set up to vet that change. And that's what we're here for, is to talk about it, to provide an open forum for the members of the public to hear about it. And, you know, some Boulder reporting labs going to pick it up, they're going to say, well, OSMP, you know, is proposing this and OSPT is going to talk about it and, you know, it's a targeted change, you know, and it's driven by, you know, safety concerns and, you know, does anybody know that there are 200 kids a day from Fairview who are, you know, riding their mountain bikes on the street because they can't use a trail that goes directly from their school to the, the trails where they train? And the trail's there, by the way, we just aren't letting them use it. You know, this is going to be an, an object of our discussion, if you want to come and make public comment, the meeting's on Wednesday night, you know? I'm just wondering if there's any reason why we have to, you know, engage in a fulsome planning process to completely, you know, rethink the West TSA when really there's just this one provision, I haven't read the West TSA. So, you know, I don't know how, how deeply engaged, embedded in the West TSA this prohibition is, how many changes would need to be made or if it's just one policy. But, you know, I think that there, there could be some surgery done and, and you don't have to, you know, invent the whole body. So that's where I'm thinking about it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your, your great presentations.
Thank you.
Dan, I think, yeah, thank you. Up in, up in a hyperspace. So is that it for the agenda until we get to director updates?
Yeah, in fact, I, and I have not made any note of any director updates.
Nothing?
Yeah.
Oh, I was saying, yeah, in order to look at specific planning guidance, you don't necessarily have to open up the whole plan. We work with our city attorney's office to determine if, if a proposed change, what is the recommended route and she would look at what, how council dealt with the issue. And chances are, if we were to make what would be considered a considerable change to an element of the plan, that it would probably be highly recommended that we would revisit it, counsel again. But no, we wouldn't be revisiting the whole TSA in order to make a targeted change. There is a scalpel approach to that.
Would it be helpful for us to have a motion on this issue?
You mean like a resolution of the board? I don't know, I mean, is, is this something that y'all want to, you know?
Make a motion about opening up that without hearing, having a community conversation?
I, I mean, I, I don't know if, if we necessarily need to bring this up as-
Can we write a form, can we write a letter, can we write a recommendation, can we, can we find, can we?
I think we could ask, we could ask Dan right now, you know, if this is something-
If you're, if you're asking us, will trail connections be a component of the solutions, possible solution alternatives, the answer is yes.
Is there anything we as a board can do?
If we, if, I mean, I'm not suggesting utilitarianism here, but is there something we could help, we could do to expedite it as a body?
Well, I could tell you that as of five weeks ago, we have a planner who's now assigned to this project and we have-
Is that Joshua who's here?
No, Josh, no, Casey's, we have, as you know, we lost two of our three planners, we lost over the past eight months and we have filled both positions this summer. And so Jenna is our planner that has been assigned to this project and she has spent the last four or five weeks working with Casey's team, getting up to speed on everything that's been done up to date. And she is the one that will be working with Casey's team and project sponsor to, you know, chart out here's what the planning process, this, developing the solutions, the alternatives, what that looks like from this point forward. So we are, we'll be back to you in December, probably be back in Q1 on more of what, I think what you're looking for in terms of what I'm hearing you tonight.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't think we need to pass a resolution and, you know, I don't, I don't think we're entitled to direct staff on, on how they're, they're supposed to, you know, what they're supposed to do. Like you guys need to go and update this plan, that's not in our purview. But I, I get the feeling like staff's heard us loud and clear.
Yeah.
And, and I would go as far as to say personally, you know, I would love to see, you know, if this is really the priority that I think it is, I, I feel like it's priority. I hear that the other folks on the board here, it's a priority that, you know, we would aim to have, you know, a, a process before next mountain biking season to potentially update the West TSA to allow the Trail Connector in Shanahan to be used by bikes. You know, that's, it's September now, you know, kids are going to start, you know, using the trails in August, so it's 11 months from now. To me, that seems like a, a reasonable timeframe. I'd love to see that as a, as an aspirational goal, but, you know, that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just like to ask point blank, that is there a way to, to restructure the process to act on low hanging fruit? I mean, we, when we talked about this in our retreat, we're like, yeah, we could boil the ocean, there's all these different things, we could have additional bus lines and we could, well, there's not that many drivers, we're not going to be able to solve for some of those bigger things, right? But what are the things that are under our control, like under OSMP's control? Can we look at the process in a, at a way that says, actually, yeah, we, we know this is under our control and this is something that we could do? And can we make it a priority? So I'm just asking point blank, can you look at it with that lens?
And I, I wonder if it's worth emphasizing, this data exploration, I realize, can feel like a delay for, you know, all of us and many of the people we heard who are very action oriented and want to be efficient. But the intention of, of kind of doing this exploration of the data was not to delay the next steps in any way, like the delay from that original timeline you mentioned was simply because of staffing.
And I, I understand that totally, Frances. It's just that the February memo had it broken out by quarter and now you're presenting us a year and now the block says TBD. It's very disheartening to go from, okay, the plant, the department has a plan to, good luck with that. I mean, that's how it could feel, like somebody sitting in the audience, it's like, oh, TBD, okay, that's, that doesn't feel like it's real to them, that you're respectfully responding to their needs and their requests.
And, and I think as staff, we're just getting to the point of having the kickoff where we can communicate some of those things more clearly with our planning staff getting on board. So if you think back to the, the first presentation night where you're at like the 30,000-foot view, that's, that's the approach we're still at. There are so many specific actions, including these bike connections, which are, are part of what we're considering at this point. I think as the planning project gets kicked off, that's where we really narrow the scope down to what is, you know, what can we implement now, what are these longer-term visions and goals? So I think we as staff here do hear you.
Yeah.
You want to go to Sarah right now?
Okay, go ahead.
I, I really, as a business owner and a strategist, which it's a different world, but there's a similarity, it's like you're, you're, or as a parent, you're always holding the big picture and then you're also having to maintain that flexibility to be responsive to what's real and happening in the moment. And I think it is both like, what is the boil the ocean plan that's going to happen over 10 or 20 years? And we, this is, there is a parallel here to what we just experienced with the fire conversation. We had a group of citizens coming to us and saying, we have an issue on Flagstaff Road and it's happening every night and it's going to get worse over the summer and please fix it now, we're afraid. And to me, there's a parallel here. We, and, and so with the fire conversation, we're talking like intercity departments, cross-city, everything, like just try to not boil the ocean kind of stuff, like hold back the wildfire. And with this, we have major infrastructure development, major planning, major intercity connection, we do need to do our homework, we're so good at that, I know as a department. And we have this very, I like how you called it just surgery or scalpel. We just have this thing where people are really asking us to do something. And so I, I hope that we can have a similar kind of response time that we had with Flagstaff Road. We, I think, did such a good job of responding at Flagstaff Road. We closed it over the Fourth of July, we are working on the gates, we had our clear plans for what's going on there. So if we could get out of TBD mode just on the connector piece, we have families talking about kids dying on their bikes, we have multiple people showing up from all parts of the city, not, not even just South Boulder residents anymore, we're talking about hundreds of high school kids. And so I, I really think that we, this is going to be one of those situations where it's going to serve us, we're going to save time and energy for all of ourselves and make a positive impression for the community if we can just really get this done. And 11 months still feels like a really long time, but like an action plan for what would happen in the 11 months just for this very, very specific thing, I think it would be good for us.
Brady?
I just want to say, Dan, it's helpful to know that you have staff constrained and new planners, I mean, I think that context is just helpful for the public too. I think it's, it's, it's just important to remember that even for us as board members, this is, a lot of this is black box, we don't know what you're up against, we don't understand. And so the more context you can provide us and the public, the more we get, we, we understand what's, what's going on, so thank you for that. And in the, just brainstorming here, like, we could open it temporarily, it could be known as an experiment, I mean, is, is that something that we could do? I mean, there's, there's, there's a contingent in the city that feel like, like there's, you know, if anything ever opens to a bike, it's always going to be open to a bike. And if this is a naive suggestion, then please educate me on why it's a naive suggestion. But if we don't know what we're going to do, the, the, it's the status quo is the one that always wins out. If you've got, if our gut tells us this is a good idea, if, if the infrastructure is there, if the community's saying this is a safety issue, why don't we try it out? And why don't we do some, why don't we take some- And why don't we do some, why don't we take some kind of intermediate parallel action to our, to our planning process and communicate to the community that we're hearing, we're doing our best, we're going to stick to our guns in the planning process. But in the, in the meantime, we're all going to collect data. We're going to collect real time data, people using it. We're going to see how many conflicts there are. We're going to see if hikers and bird watchers are terrified for their lives because the, the kids from Fairview are coming down. Or maybe they're going to be respectful and we don't know. But that would actually give us more data.
That sounds like a great suggestion and I can see Dan taking notes. So Dan, if you don't, if you want to respond, great. If, if not, I'm happy to gavel us out.
I've got the note.
Okay. Awesome. Then I'm going to call this meeting gavelled out.